Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation by Ted Inman Chaplin of the Oklahoma City Police Department, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jane Green representing Scouting America, Troop 6201. Please stand as you are able.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are so thankful and grateful for the opportunity, first, to come before you, give you thanks for everything you've done for us, and ask your blessing upon this city, upon our mayor, our city manager, and our city council. I pray that you'd bless them, give them wisdom as they make decisions for our city. And again, we're thankful for you and what you've done for us. Would you go before us this day? Bless. We'll be thankful to give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Now, would you please, now, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Chaplin Inman, and thank you, Jane. I call this meeting of the city council to order, and I have a presentation of Parks and Recreation Month. If everybody from the Parks Department would join me down front. All right. Well, it is Parks and Recreation Month. Actually, July. We're getting ahead of the game. We're getting lots of notice. That's good. And so I would love to learn, though, a little bit more about this. So I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City provides a variety of parks and recreational venues and services for the use and enjoyment of the public. And whereas the mission of the city's Parks and Recreation Department is to provide cultural, social, and recreational experiences to residents so that they have opportunities to cultivate wellness and enjoy a healthy lifestyle. And whereas through a wide range of programs and services, OKC Parks and Recreation contributes to the well-being of the community by making Oklahoma City a better place to explore, learn, grow, and play. And whereas MAPS-IV includes more than $300 million in funding for parks and recreation projects, including resources to upgrade 105 neighborhood and community parks, youth centers, youth soccer facilities, and senior centers. And whereas since 1985, July has been nationally celebrated as Parks and Recreation Month to promote building strong and vibrant communities through the power of parks and recreation, and to recognize the staff and volunteers who activate, program, and maintain local parks. And whereas this year marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together celebrates the vital role parks and recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing essential services, and fostering the growth of our communities. Now, therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Parks and Recreation Month in Oklahoma City.
Well, thank you. Well, that's a national theme of Build Together, Play Together seems most appropriate, however, for OKC. As mentioned in the proclamation, we have all those MAPS-IV investments, and a little later this morning, we'll talk about a lot more investment through our upcoming bond issues. So we are definitely a community that is investing in our Parks and Recreation Department, and we'd love to hear from the Director of Parks and Recreation. Melinda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Yes, we could not be more grateful to the voters of Oklahoma City who keep reinvesting in our city, but also in our Parks and Recreation Department. We have an amazing group of represented staff up here from our Recreation, Natural Resources, Grounds Management, and our Administration divisions up here, who work tirelessly every single day to make sure that our public has as much access and feel welcome and able to use all of our parks facilities, as well as just the open green spaces that people find for mental health and also just physical health. So we appreciate the voters. We appreciate their trust in us, and just thank you to our staff who work tirelessly, and also all the volunteers, neighborhood associations, who come out and help beautify our public spaces and really help us stretch all of our resources as far as we can. So thank you to our partners, our volunteers, our staff, and of course, all of our council who have their faith in us. So we appreciate it, and go Thunder.
Thank you, and we appreciate you. Let's hear our Parks and Rec team. All right. That concludes office of the mayor. We do have some items from council today. These are a couple of items from the Judiciary Committee. Item A is a resolution designating Donald Kiffin as presiding judge, and a B is a resolution designating Edward Hasbrook as vice-presiding judge. Why don't we hear from our Judiciary Committee Chair, Councilman Stone Cypher?
Thank you, Your Honor. On June 3, the Judiciary Committee met in a special meeting. We convened to discuss recommendations for the appointment of a presiding judge and a vice-presiding judge. The committee recommends that Judge Donald O. Kiffin be appointed as the presiding judge. Judge Kiffin has served as a municipal judge since 2015, and prior to that, he was a special judge from 1998 to 2015. We also recommend that Judge Edward D. Hasbrook be appointed vice-presiding judge. He has served as a municipal judge since January 3, 2017. I would say this has all been brought about by our presiding judge, Philippa James, making the decision to retire. She has done an incredible job and leaves an incredible legacy for the work that she's done. I'm proud to say that last month at the Oklahoma County Bar Association, Judge James received a lifetime achievement award, and that was well worth it. The things she's done to modernize the court system and to make the court system a fair system will not be forgotten. And so I just, I do want to thank Judge James for all her hard work, but we also want to make these two recommendations at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Why don't we take them one at a time? Yeah, let's do a motion on 4A.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes when you get the chance. Passes unanimously. And then item 4B. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Well, thank you, Councilman Stone Cypher and your committee for their work.
Thank you.
Item 5, City Manager reports. Mr. City Manager?
The only items we have today, or only item we have today, is claims and payroll, and that can be found on OKC.gov.
All right. Item 6, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 7, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Item 11E is already on the agenda as being deferred. Is there anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have a few items. We have a few items that are on today, starting on page 16. Item 11T1, Unsecured Structures. All these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 3920 North Barnes Avenue, to re-notify the owner. Item C, 1532 North Classen Boulevard, the owner has secured. And item M, 1108 Southwest 151st Street, the owner has secured. Continuing on page 16, item 11U1, Abandoned Buildings. Item I, 1108 Southwest 151st Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Item 8, Revocable Permits and Events. We have item 8A, a revocable right-of-way use permit with the FMD Association to hold the Farmers Market District Summer Solstice Festival on June 21 on Southwest 2. And we have Madison Amber here to talk about it.
Hello. My name is Madison, and I am the Marketing Manager, as well as the Events Director for the Oklahoma City Farmers Market District. In partnership with Ogini, Lowe's, and Delisi Delivers, we are hosting our Second Annual Summer Solstice Festival for the community. This is an all-ages event with live music, cooking demos, education on agriculture and native plants here in Oklahoma City, and a space where our local businesses, entrepreneurs can have a place to sell at our festival. We fill the street with about 80 vendors, and it goes on from 11 to 5.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Sounds like a wonderful event. I'm happy to move for approval.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now we'll recess council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We do have a scheduled presentation on item D.
Yes, this is the Municipal Facilities Authority Budget. And so Nicole Tower with Budget Office is going to give us a quick presentation, just to give us an overview. A lot of the things that you'll see in the MFA are already approved in the city budget, but we'll let Nicole take us through that and explain that.
Hi. Good morning. Nicole Tower, Office of Management and Budget and Finance here at the city. Today, you'll be presented with both the MFA budget and the PPA budget. While both play vital roles in supporting city operations, I like to think of the MFA as internal-facing, so more like supportive services. And the PPA tends to be more outward-facing, supporting activities that directly serve the public. Okay, the overall, the trust budget is just over $146.4 million. Last year, the budget was $145.9 million, so relatively small increase year-over-year at 0.30%. You can see the various budget functions on this slide. This slide grouped similar functions together to illustrate and summarize the functions of the trust. Just point out a couple of them on here. The biggest portion is health insurance. It's $85 million, or 58%. And this comes from both the city and its employees as they contribute to the premiums paid for health insurance. And the next largest category is information technology at $13 million, or 9%. And this is definitely one of the areas that utilizes the ability to enter into multi-year contracts in this trust. Okay, when we look at revenue, health insurance contributions from the city and its employees is the largest source at $82 million, or 56%. There are various transfers from other funds, such as the IT or the RISK Internal Service Fund, and that's the second largest at $38 million, or 26%. On the expense slide, payments for other services and charges dominate at $137 million, or 93%. And this makes sense because things such as insurance premiums and IT contracts come out of this. Just one thing to note, there are no employees in the MFA, so that's why you don't see any personnel cost. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the budget.
Thanks, Nicole.
That's our only presentation on MFA, and I should note that executive session is not requested on item I2, and so we could take all of the items.
I would like to request a separate vote on item I, please.
A separate vote, okay. Then we will see if, why don't we vote on that now? Then let's do a vote on item I1. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes 7 to 2. And then we have the remainder of the items, items A through H, and item J, we could take with one motion. Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA, and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have a presentation that will encompass items B through E. I would note, these are joint items, so we'll see them again later, but we'll probably handle all the presentation and debate here under the PPA agenda, since it is first. These items all relate to retention of, in some way, fashion or form, some, it's a little various, but the crux of the matter is retention of our relationship, our long-term relationship with the Major League Professional, most obviously, the Thunder. A few years ago, we saw the end of our lease looming originally in 2023, and recognized that the community didn't really have the infrastructure in place to have, expect to have, a long-term relationship with Major League professional sports. And so we, as a community, went through a two-year conversation about that, culminating in a vote in December of '23 to make a commitment to a new arena that passed 71%. These agreements all sort of relate to that new arena and to the long-term relationship with the Thunder and the operator of the arena, the new arena. And I just, you know, even in advance of this presentation, I certainly give a lot of credit to the city manager and his team, and to Councilman Stone, who observed the arena negotiations for the council, for all their work. This is a highly complex set of information. I mean, the documents are over an inch thick. There's just a lot of work that goes into this. And, but it is certainly one of the primary accomplishments of this city government, really, over the last 30 years, is to establish a relationship with Major League professional sports. And we've obviously seen in recent weeks what that can mean to our city. So again, congratulations on getting to this point, and we'd love to hear more about your work.
Yes. As Mayor said, this has been a long stretch here. We've been talking for more than two years, really in negotiations at different levels for the last two years, as we brought together the letter of intent that brought us the election that went before the voters, as we've got the development agreement that talked about how we would partner together to work on building the new arena. The overwhelming support that we had from the voters really sent a clear message that our intent was to keep the team here for 25 years. And that's what we've tried to do as we approach these agreements, is work it in a way that we help the team to be successful here, but also incentivize the team through the contract to remain. And so it really is what we want to do. I want to mention again, as what Mayor said, I appreciate so much the work that Brent has done, and Sue, the attorney, Stephen Barker, and Laura McDevitt, Paula. We had so many people working on this with us and the contributions. And then Councilman Stone in sitting in as council observer. It's been really a great partnership here as we've worked through this on our team. But the Thunder's been a great partner with us as well. There's a lot of things we disagreed about, but was always with respect with one another. And they've been just great partners in this, and we look forward to presenting this to you and carrying this forward to help keep the team here in Oklahoma City for long term. So Brent, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you present the president. We're going to have actually two, so there's four agreements. I should have just mentioned this, and Brent will talk through this. There's four agreements that are on here. Two of the agreements are with the city, with the Thunder, and with ASM. One of the agreements is with the city and the Thunder, and then one of the agreements will be with the city and ASM. And so we have the used license agreement, which is the core agreement. Well, often you'll hear teams refer to this as their lease, and sometimes that's what they've actually got. The preferential rights gives them the right for developing on, purchasing the land to develop on the current site, and purchasing that land, the current arena site, and purchasing that land at fair market value. The food and beverage agreement really is a partner agreement with the used license agreement. And then the operator agreement, ASM, to continue operating for the first five years in the arena. And so these agreements are all that are on. Brent's going to present the first two, and then Sue Hollenbeck, who manages our various venues, event venues and facilities, will present the last two agreements.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. Brent Bryant, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Go to the next slide. Before we get, before we get into the details, I want to just provide you an overview of the history of where we are, where we came from here. In 2008, the Thunder came to Oklahoma City after relocating from Seattle, where they had been there for over 40 years. The initial agreement with the team was a 15-year lease or used license agreement. You'll hear us say that, like the city manager said, interrelating there. Oklahoma City is a small market, but from a media standpoint, but we are a big league city, which we continue to prove day in and day out, as we did last night. We're the 20th-largest city in the nation. We rank as the 42nd-largest metropolitan market, and Oklahoma City is the third-smallest market in the NBA. The NBA has 28 markets, and we're 26, ahead of New Orleans and Memphis. And with that in mind, when we looked at this, when we looked at putting these deals together, we wanted to make sure that we could create a scenario where the team was successful in Oklahoma City. And so that was kind of the thing that anchored us as we went about putting this deal, and we focused on a long-term commitment, which I believe we have from them here. When you look at, the first one was 15 years, and now the initial one's 25. That's a great win for Oklahoma City, and I'll get into that in more detail. And the model was to invest in the team's success. So on September 26 of 2023, we signed a letter of intent with the team, the city council did. It was the basis for our tax election. And again, that was the 25-year commitment. At that time, they made the commitment, and we made the commitment to build a new arena for the team and the community. The team committed to put $50 million toward that arena, and with a minimum budget of $900 million for the new arena. That budget did include $70 million from MAPS-IV. That was originally earmarked for the existing Paycom Center, and so that money was moved to the budget to help us get to the $900 million. I will tell you, that fund now has $78 million in it in lieu of the 70, so that has helped us in some respects. Future agreements were, well, one of the things we wanted to do, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel with this project, so we wanted to use the existing ULA, the existing agreements, and use this going forward. We didn't try to start fresh anew. We wanted to do that. One reason you want to do that is the NBA's already approved those type of agreements, and they're used to those kinds of that. We thought that would be helpful in the long term. December 12, '23, with a 71% approval, the voters of Oklahoma City resoundingly said, yes, we want to keep a team in Oklahoma City. And that was a clear message that we And that was a clear message that we, as a team, took here at City Hall to keep the team in Oklahoma City long term. May 21st, 2024, we entered into a development agreement, outlined the partnership between the city and the team relating to how we're going to construct the new arena. Target completion was set for June 28th with an outline date of no longer, a little later than June of 2030. And we're still pushing to do, get to the June of 2028. It also identified the old Cox Center as the site where we want to build the new arena, which we all know right now is being demolished. That's been in the news the last couple of days, and so that's under demolition as we speak. City commitment was, again, to build a new arena, to be a first-class, state-of-the-art NBA facility with a minimum of 750,000 square feet. The existing PACOM Center had around 580,000 square feet, so we're growing the building there. And also, the commitment was to build one with public spaces and amenities, along with team offices, and we needed to replace the thousand-space parking garage underneath the Cox Center. And that was also our commitment to do that as well. So I'll get into the details. Again, use license agreement or lease, they're synonymous, so however I refer to that, that's what I'm talking about here. 25 years is the commitment of the team to stay in Oklahoma City plus five three-year renewals. So combined to that, that's a 40-year commitment. One of the things that we're able to add, the current agreement on the PACOM site has liquidated damage in it, but it's the minimus compared to what city leadership has been able to negotiate that with the team. Liquidated damages, if the team relocates, is a billion dollars for years one through five, and then it declines to 850, down to 750, then it stops at around $250 million. And this is, again, we wanted a commitment from the team to be here the long term. We believe we were able to do that here. Another thing that we added in the use license agreement was the economic benchmark. The agreement, the 2008 agreement with the team allowed the team to leave if their local revenues declined below 85% in two consecutive years. And that is one of, and you see that in a lot of small-market leases or use licenses agreements. And that's one of the things that we thought was critical in keeping the team here for long term. And so we were able to negotiate that out of the agreement, so that no longer exists in the new agreement. And again, it supports us to have a long-term team for the long term. The use licensing fee, some people often refer to this as that's their rent or something like that. But the use license fee in the current, in the 2008 agreement, was broken out into two things. There was a use license fee, plus there were game day expenses. Combined, that was about $51,000. And in addition to that, the way that was structured originally is those numbers would not adjust but every five years. And that was something that we thought we wanted to change. So we, for ease of administration, we wanted to simplify it. So now, when they move into the new arena, it's $58,000. It's just a use license fee. It's $58,000. And starting in year, when year one, year two through five, it'll grow at 5%. And then after that, it will grow based on the CPI, not to exceed 3%. And I was looking at the historical facts of the CPI. The last 20 years, the CPI has averaged 2.61%. So we feel good about that.
And I think you said in the first five years, in years two through five, it doesn't grow at 5%, it's at 3%, right?
It's at 3%, so I apologize. Thank you. At 3%. One of the things that we do have in it is it's capped at 3.75 million annually. So depending on the CPI, we don't know exactly when we'll, we have a feeling for when we'll get there, but again, it's depending on the CPI at the time. And one other thing, it continues to require the operator to provide a specific standard of service. The team and ASM have very high standards in the way they provide services, and that's something that is incorporated into the agreement that we want to continue. New ownership, the new arena ownership, the city will be responsible for all capital expenditures. The city is also responsible for, again, maintaining a first-class, state-of-the-art NBA arena. The city will remain, will be responsible for arena operations, and we have a companion item, as we, as the city manager mentioned earlier, with ASM. And then the team also retains the naming rights of the facility. One thing, in cooperation with the team, a facility assessment will be undertaken every seven years to see what the needs are at the facility. These facilities get used significantly, and you have to continually reinvest in them. And we have a way of, what we believe is a good way of maintaining it, with the new, with the Arena Capital Improvement Fund that is in the agreement. We plan on funding that by various sources of funds. One is a team event facility fee on a per-ticket basis. We'll go into that facility, into the improvement fund. Any proceeds from the sale of the existing PACOM site, which we'll discuss here in the preferential agreement here in a minute, that's another one that we will use that to fund that, to make deposits in the capital improvement fund. In addition to that, any sale or lease of the property on the new arena site, if any, if there's property after we, after the facility is built, that can be leased out or sold, we will, the proceeds from that will also go into that fund. And then the final one would be any arena sales tax, the six-year penny sales tax that is effective April 1. Anything that's available that is there after we pay off all the debt will also go into that fund as well. One new thing into the agreement is the team does have an option to operate the new arena. But it will, it's only, the team has the option to operate the arena at the end of any operator agreement term. And as we'll get into here in a minute, the new agreement with ASM, we're going to extend it till the end of the use license agreement that they're currently in, plus five years. And so anytime after that, the team could have the option of taking over the operation. We would have to negotiate a new operator agreement with them if that was the case. And just to share with you here, Oklahoma City is only one of four teams out of 30 that are not the operators of their facilities that they play in. So that's a unique thing. All right, now we'll get in, any questions on the ULA? All right, well, then we'll go to the preferential rights agreement, which is OC PPA, item C. Under the preferential arrangements, the team has the exclusive right to purchase the existing arena property within five years of the opening of the new arena. And for that, they will pay us $100,000 annual fee. One thing I want to point out, though, about this, they will purchase the land or the property at fair market value at the time of the sale, not today's price, but at the fair market value. So that's, I want to just make sure that that is clear. In addition to that, on this next slide here, the right of first refusal. It's not our intent to go out for an RFP or anything like that for the development, but if somebody from the private sector does come to us that says, I want to build something there, and I'll pay you X dollars, and it's a serious offer, we believe that we would go back to the team, and they have the right to match that. And so, and then in addition to that, any demolition costs related to the facility would be credited to the purchase price. Operating expenses, as they move into the new arena, the first two years of the operating expenses of the current PACOM Center, the city will maintain those, will take care of that. But then after two years, the city and the team will split the costs 50/50 for up to $200,000, where the team will have to contribute to that as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the preferential rights agreement.
We'll go ahead and continue with, I mean, feel free to ask questions along the way, and then there'll be some discussion when we finish. We'll let Sue Hollenbeck give us a presentation on the food and beverage agreement and then the operator agreement.
Sounds good. Thank you. Sue Hollenbeck, Special Projects Manager. So I'll go over item D, which is the new arena food and beverage agreement. The new agreement is with, between the city, the OC PPA, the team, and the operator. It is incredibly similar to the original 2008 agreement with their amendments on it, and it keeps the standard of service for the arena, which is very important to the operator, the city, and to the team. The modifications are, we have simplified the terms for revenue sharing. The operator and the team will mutually agree on a third-party concessionaire. We've updated our local vendor agreements. We really want our local flair in the arena, so we've updated those agreements to make it more beneficial for the vendor, for the team, and for the operator. And this is really important, is that the concessionaire has agreed to put 1% of the gross sales into a CIP, which is a capital improvement fund for, very specifically for food and beverage and concessionaire items and repair. So that's new, and that is a really positive thing. And that's really, it's the food and beverage agreement, it's really quite simple and very easy. So we'll go on to the facility management agreement, which is E in your packet. The new facility management agreement is a renewal, so it extends and amends the original 2008 agreement. It's, the current agreement is consistent with the current 2008 agreement of the ULA, so that goes as far as into the current building until 2026, or if that gets extended until 2029. And the team has the right and the approval of the arena operator selection and the operator agreement. The operator extends for the first five years in the new arena. So it has the extension into, with the current PACOM, and the first five years into the new arena. And ASM has been operating the current arena since 2002, since it opened in the first MAPS program. So the next slide. The facility management agreement also has a pre-opening and consulting services for free from ASM. This is really a wonderful thing for us as we're working on the new building for the next few years, that they're going to consult for free. It has an adjusted compensation package, which is concurrent with the 2024 audit. It has an updated marketing fund language, which is also concurrent with the 24 audit, and clarifies the capital improvement management fund. And finally, the facility management renewal has a community benefit in it, which has the resolution that was brought forward in 2023, I believe, in September of 2023. And it has a workforce intermediary and a minimum wages that are commensurate or comparable to city minimum wages. And that will be effective in the new arena. So that's the new, the amended facility agreement.
Thanks, Sue. That's all the presentation that we have here on the agreements for the new arena.
Okay. We have some residents who signed up to speak, but would council like to ask any questions now? Okay. Jessica Cifuentes.
Good morning, Mayor of Oklahoma City, David Holt, the rest of the city council, city manager Craig Freeman, and all of the stakeholders present today. My name is Jessica Cifuentes, and I am proudly representing the beautiful people of Oklahoma City Public Schools District III, which has the westmost boundary of Meridian, eastmost boundary of Union Pacific Railroad, northernmost boundaries of up to Northwest 36 and 10th Street. And my district goes down south towards covering the Wheeler District, with southern boundaries including Southwest 44th and Southwest 29th. All of this to say that the Thunder Arena and most of the downtown area is actually in my district. I am here today to talk about the arena use agreement and ensuring that the available 37% of the surrounding hidden workforce, including marginalized communities, are being reached with these high-quality jobs. You saw in your presentation earlier, we might have a small market, but we're a big league city. But I believe that if you, Oklahoma City Council, wants to make a statement to the rest of the US and the rest of the NBA, you will ensure that not only are these surrounding workforce targeted, you will ensure a fair compensation for all people, all means all, for all of those that are working in or on the Thunder Arena. Some of those benefits towards doing this includes establishing a loyal workforce that lives nearby, reducing commute time, and excessive use of energy used to transport people to get to work, providing an exciting opportunity and place to work for high school students and people of all ages, and having Oklahoma City be, and having Oklahoma City be an example and role model to the rest of the NBA and the best places to work in the United States. With almost one in four people living in Oklahoma City metro area being Hispanic or Latino, I am speaking on behalf of my community for fair wages for all of those people that will be working in the arena. As the first Guatemalan American elected in the state of Oklahoma, there's a huge Guatemalan population here in Oklahoma City. Let's send a message that we appreciate the workforce and that Oklahoma City is here to stay, grow, and values all stakeholders. I am actually wearing a very special T-shirt today. It's Mark Twain Elementary's T-shirt celebrating a 20-year partnership with Thunder. I also saw that you guys have several long-term contracts that will enable Thunder to stay here for a long time in Oklahoma City. The kids in my district, they're going to be growing up and looking for a place to work. I am here to advocate on their behalf and potentially where they might work here in Oklahoma City. Thank you guys so much for your time, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Tim O'Connor.
Tim O'Connor, I'm president of Central Oklahoma Labor Federation here in central Oklahoma. I want to agree with everything she just said. I think she stole my speech, actually. But I, I support the attempt to put in a community benefits agreement, at least on the two items that are in that. It's a little disturbing to me that we couldn't go the extra step and tell ASM if the workers there decided to have a union organizing campaign, that ASM would remain neutral. And that's nowhere in that agreement now, the way it stands. And I think that's unfortunate for the workers. But then it also, it's unfortunate for the city, because in a regular organizing campaign, all the things that I heard negative about an organizing campaign are on the table when it comes to organizing without that labor peace part of that agreement. So I'm going to continue to work to make sure that those workers and the potential workers that you plan to hire are treated with respect, and we're going to fight for them to have their opportunity to have a voice at work, if they choose, not if I choose, if they choose. And that's a part that I think was missing in the discussion, is that those workers have to decide they want to organize a union, not me, not anybody that was in favor of the original CBA. But this was our first attempt. We got in a little late on community benefits agreements. I thanked Nikki Nice for bringing that thing back to the table that I wasn't even aware of at the time. But it's a great thing for workers. It's a great thing for the city. If we had something like that back in the 90s, when we started all these MAPS programs, we'd have a middle class above all else in Oklahoma City that you could be proud of. And it'd be a great place to raise your family. So we're going to, I haven't given up on the neutrality clause, and so we may be back in the future asking the city to take some kind of action on that. So thank you for your time. And I'll just say, you know, workers that are working in the arena or around the arena, hospitality worker, whatever, if you have a question or are interested, you know, there's a place you can go to get that information, and it's the Central Oklahoma Labor Federation. And I would encourage them to contact me if there's some interest in that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Warren.
Thank you, Mayor Holt, and to the city council. I appreciate your time. Hesje Estongo, Amy Warren, Chiu Chiu Kedos. That is Muskogee for Hello, How Are You? My name is Amy Warren. I'm a resident of Ward Eight. On September 26th, 2023, a resolution declaring the intent to utilize a workforce intermediary program to focus recruitment and training for new arena jobs in certain areas was voted on in favor of. A resolution that passed eight to one, with councilperson Mark Stonecypher of Ward Eight being the only vote against. A resolution that proposes the people of Oklahoma City invest in our economy, legacy, and community well-being. A resolution made in good faith that includes the use of labor peace agreements that are currently missing in the new contract with ASM. I see several friends of labor, some having loved ones heavily involved in union organizing. I also see a contract up for vote that does not adhere to the original resolution, does not fully contribute to community well-being, and dismisses in part the community benefits voted on by council in 2023. We should be celebrating a big game five win, cheering on Jalen Williams' historic 40-point. 40-point game, and preparing to bring our first NBA championship home. Instead, the people are here, reminding you who you work for. We are also reminded of the importance of what teamwork looks like. Imagine what we can accomplish if we work together toward a collective goal, a goal that places an original intent at the center of this contract. A goal that doesn't center the interest of a few, rather includes what is good for all the people. A goal that we can all be proud of. I encourage you to rework the ASM contract and incorporate the use of labor peace agreements. Mado, all my relations, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Arturo Alonso.
Good morning, Mayor Holt, and council members. My name is Arturo Alonso. I proudly serve House District 89 in South Oklahoma City. But I'm not just here today as a state representative. I'm here as a kid that grew up in the south side of Oklahoma City. I grew up seeing firsthand the challenges that many of our families face, whether it's parents keeping the lights on or, and feeding their kids, finding stable jobs, or just getting a fair shot. I also know how much potential exists in our community when the right opportunities are put in front of us. This new arena is a big deal for the city and especially for my community. South OKC is one of the youngest areas in our city. Our kids grew up cheering for the Thunder and dreaming big. But too often, they're growing up in neighborhoods with some of the highest rates of youth violence, poverty, and job disconnection. That is why I'm here today, to make sure this historic investment doesn't just benefit some, but it benefits everyone, especially those who need it most. We've taken steps in the right direction, but the current agreement falls short. First, we need to make sure that every job at the arena comes with quality pay, not just for a few. If someone is working in a public facility built with public dollars, they deserve wages they can actually live on. That means a real minimum of 15 an hour for all workers, not just some. Second, we have to be intentional about how we connect people to these jobs. That means going beyond the bare minimum. We need real, on-the-ground outreach, partnering with trusted organizations, knocking on doors in our hardest-hit neighborhoods, and making sure people who've been disconnected from the work know they have a path forward. We've done it before, and we can do it again. And finally, we need to put the labor peace agreement back in. It's a simple idea. The operator doesn't bring in an outside consultant to spread misinformation about labor organizing. In exchange, the workers agree not to strike. And during moments like the ones we're in right now, where the Thunder just got the three-to-two lead in the finals, I really think that's worth something. It's been done in other cities like Milwaukee. It protects workers, and it protects the city's investment. And I might be biased, but I think Oklahoma City is a better city, and that means we can do better. This agreement has the potential to change lives, especially in communities like the ones I grew up in. It's not just about jobs. It's about dignity. It's about creating real opportunity, and it's about making sure this reflects not just who we are, but who we want to be as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Drew.
Thank you all for hearing me today and for your service. My name is Elizabeth Drew, and James is one of my best friends and a treasure to this city. So I wanted to come out today and talk about my support for his work on the contract with the new arena. I think the most remarkable gem James has given us in this context is the community benefits agreement modeled after Milwaukee Bucks. For this, he brought forth the NBA contract's labor peace agreement, such a beautiful and important partnership. As a member of two unions myself, I ought to see actively, and IBEW inactively. As a citizen of Ward Two, I was thrilled to hear about this part of his work when he started talking about it a couple of years ago. I know it's been dropped off the contract at the moment, and I ask that you please add this back on as an amendment to the contract he ratified today. I also want to express my hope that all employees, including contractors, be paid the negotiated wage of at least $15 an hour. And lastly, I want to express how important it is to have a real plan in place to rise to the call for workforce intermediary outreach. The most vulnerable populations need your support in very tangible ways, and this could easily just get trampled over if we aren't very intentional about how we approach this task. We know where the population most needs these jobs based on youth poverty surveys in the last four years. We have to focus there. I would love to emphasize that working closely with labor to establish an outreach-driven hiring hall is a great way to help that happen and have it done well. This is your high standard. Union workers are conscientious and professional because they have the union to train them and support them. Please consider adding the peace agreement back in as an amendment today. You'll definitely, definitely need labor later, and labor needs you now. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the residents who signed up to speak. Are there any other comments or questions from council on these items?
I do have a few questions. I'm curious to know, so my, my understanding is, so there's the, the money coming from the sales tax initiative from a few years ago. But there was also a mention of both public space and a parking garage, that my understanding is those will be included in the 2025 bond package, which is going to be presented later today. Can you share how much of that, essentially what, what is being allocated for the streetscape and then the parking garage out of the 2025 bond proposal, proposed package?
Out of the bonds?
Yes.
So right now, there's a, in the bond program, there is funding for a, the streetscapes and the, you know, like all the streetscapes coming out right now as we're doing the demo, every, all the streetscape and everything around it. So we'll have a package in the streets enhancement program that will provide for all the streetscaping around the arena and landscaping and all the pedestrian walkways and all that. And right now, it's $30 million that's in the bond. And then on the parking garage, there's a parking garage, so right now, again, as we're taking out the existing Cox Center Garage, this will effectively replace that. It won't have quite as many spaces, I think, the way we're planning right now. But it will be a, a parking garage, a downtown parking garage that's on-site, that will be, we're, we're targeting 650 spaces that would be on the, on the arena site. And that's $35 million that we have in the bond for that.
Okay. And I did express this when we had small group meetings a few weeks ago, but when the original arena proposal came to us, it did not occur to me to ask, because typically with developments, any private development, anything like the streetscaping sidewalks, you know, parking garage that might be part of the development would be included in that original dollar amount projected. And so in my head, that just includes all of the streetscaping, all of the, the parking garage that needed to get replaced. But, so to learn that it, it wasn't included, and it instead is going to be passed off onto this bond, which then takes money out of really vital infrastructure investments in our neighborhoods, is, is a bit frustrating. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of that and that we recognize that, that that's additional fund, public funds that are going to this arena project that weren't included in the original essentially $1 billion arena sales tax. My other question around public funds, and I know, again, previously under the previous agreements that we've been operating under, there is still a certain amount of public funds that I understand come out of the general fund every year to subsidize the operations of the arena. I think when you provided that information to me, it kind of floated between eight to $12 million a year. Can you correct me if I'm wrong?
That's, it's, it's, I would say it's probably now around like nine, nine and a half million dollars, I would say is what we have right now.
And that comes out of the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay. Under these new agreements, do we project that, that the public will be continuing to subsidize operation, the arena, arena at that level? Or do we have an estimate of kind of what the operating gap will be that the city is, the public is?
We don't have an estimate on it exactly right now. I think it's a larger building. It's going to be more expensive to operate, so there's more costs associated with that. Going into a new arena, there's also going to be some more opportunities for revenues with new events and things going into it, which would offset some of that cost. I, I don't think it will be lower than what it is right now. I would suspect it could be higher than that, and it's just something, as we get all our pro formas together, that we'll have to work through and figure that out.
Those are the only questions I have at this time.
Anything else?
I'll, I'll make a comment quickly. One, I want to say thank you first to my friends who, especially those of us in strong support of working people and, and labor who are here today, and I appreciate you all making your, your comments. I, I share your belief that the labor peace agreement should have been included. I shared that with the city manager and my colleagues as well, that I think the labor peace agreement is a fair ask for neutrality and gives workers the opportunity to, on their own, by their own volition, decide to organize if that's their choice. So I'm disappointed that that was not included, but I am, and, and I join you in the future efforts that I know that we're going to have to continue to empower workers in our city. So I, I join you in that, and I hope that we can continue to work towards it. But I, I do want to highlight that there are a lot of positives for working families in this agreement. And, and I think it's, it's worth noting, one, the fight for fair and, and great wages in this is included in the agreement. A commitment from our city to not only pay a wage that's comparable to our city's great wages, which I believe is a minimum of $15 an hour.
On full-time positions.
On full-time positions. And is also, the agreement also includes a requirement that it be regionally competitive as well. And so I think that that ask is very critical. It's important that the, this public facility pay a great wage to the people who, of our city who work there. It also includes a workforce intermediary that's going to help us in going out there to some of the most needy parts of our community. Again, I appreciate our state representative sharing the people in his own neighborhood, and I know I have people in my community, just like all, all of our wards, who are underemployed, who are in need of opportunity. And I look forward to working with you, as well as members of this council, to try to, and working with ASM, to really make sure that this workforce intermediary is effective in reaching the most needy people all throughout our city so that they can get high-quality jobs. So I think it's a great opportunity. We've got three years to do it, and I think if we're working hard together, we can, we can accomplish that. I also want to thank my colleagues. I know I'm the new kid, I'm a rookie, but I, I really want to lift up and show my appreciation for Councilman Cooper's leadership on the community benefits agreement. I think it is a great, great effort. Again, I, I know that we don't have the labor peace agreement in it, but two out of three is not bad, when you think about the asks that were, that we made of the city in order to, to fight. So I'm in strong support of, of the Thunder, of this new arena. I'm biased, this is in Ward Seven. But I, I appreciate our efforts and appreciate you, city manager, for the work that's been done, and, and I'll say, "Thunder up."
Thank you.
I have a question. With everything that was said here, and thank you, everyone, for coming and doing that, the opposite side of that coin, are, are they saying that we don't do this already? We don't take care of our employees? We don't pay them well? We don't treat people well? I don't know exactly what they're saying. I think, I think.
I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, if we're, but we don't even have one Thunder employee here asking for what they're asking for.
My perspective, no. My perspective really is that ASM has every motivation to ensure that they're paying workers well, to provide that opportunity, so that they want to continue to work and do great work for them, and, and to serve well.
So a lot of us were at the game last night, and I saw, and I've been at many games, as most of you have, and I have met a lot of the people that are, that are working, that are super excited about their job, they love their job, they do everything that they do. Not one time have I seen anybody frowning or complaining about either their wages or their work environment or anything that's going on, and it's also not usually their primary job. This is a secondary kind of side hustle or something that they get to do. I'm really leery about, especially as a business owner, the government stepping in and starting to tell me how I have to treat someone or what I need to do. If I don't treat my employees well, they have the right not to work for me. The reason I have the employees I have and the retention that I have with my employees is because of the way I treat them and how we take care of them. It's a, it's a really sticky area right now. If we start getting into dictating what someone can or cannot do with their, their business. I, I'm not in favor of that by any means. So with that said, I'd really like to make a motion to remove J and K from the.
You know, I understand, but looking at it from an employer's perspective, we don't know their material costs, we don't know their production costs, we don't know their transportation costs, we don't know what it takes for them to make their business work. And we start dictating what they are supposed to pay third parties, I don't think that's the role of government to interfere in the marketplace. I'm a believer in a free-market economy. I believe in laissez-faire, and I think the cities that have stayed out of businesses with, with heavy regulations have known much better than the cities that have heavily regulated businesses across the United States. Thank you.
I agree.
I'd just like to say, when we say cities staying out, government staying out of business, we are literally subsidizing a business. Like, that is the whole conversation right now, is, if, if they do stay for 25 years, we will have, well, and I guess we'll take on the operating costs that they leave, but $10 million a year for 25 years is a quarter of a billion dollars of public funds subsidizing a private business. So it's very odd to me when we start talking about not having government be involved in, in, in free market, because this is not free market. This is very much like, we are, we are part of the market, we are dictating the market by letting some people make money off of other people having suppressed wages, not the ability to not organize without interference. Like, we are intervening. So it's, to me, it's very disingenuous to say a blanket, like, we can, we can, I think, I agree, argue or discuss the particulars of how we would like the government to be involved in business, but to just say that we're not involved, like, we are literally involved in a business right now. And that business is, you know, a global corporation that runs, that operates facilities and a national professional sports league. So it, it feels very disingenuous to just say this very black-and-white term of government staying out of, of, of telling businesses what to do, when literally the, the public, like, the, the collective we are subsidizing these private businesses already making money off of our public dollars, so.
Does this trickle down to everybody that ASM hires as a sub to come in? So the cleaning crews and the, I mean, all the way down the line?
Yes, sir.
So every subcontractor that ASM hires has to be a negotiated deal through this?
I think that, because basically what we've directed is that the employees would, would have these wages, which I would interpret as being the ASM employees. You could, you could communicate or, or believe that it's, you know, interpret it as being applying to every employee that's in the building. I believe our, our contract is with ASM, and it says its employees have to have these wages. So I would, I would interpret that as their employees. They don't control typically their wages that are paid by their subcontractors. So that's how I would, I would view that.
And I kind of view Matt's skepticism. Craig, the language in J doesn't just say SMG employees, it says all jobs at the new arena. So there's some interpretation issues there, I'd say, with that language.
Mayor?
Yes?
Hi. So I can assure you, well, I'm just curious, what is your interpretation? I know you and I have already spoken about this, but what is your interpretation in terms of the wages as it relates to the jobs in the arena?
Well, I mean, I have an interpretation. Obviously, you know, this could be debated, I'm sure, between us and SMG, but, you know, my view is the way it reads when it says agrees to compensate all new. my view is the way it reads, when it says agrees to compensate all new arena employees, all means all, and so the question about contractors that are subcontractors to SMG, I would think that SMG would be obligated by this contract to also request that their subcontractors pay wages commensurate with City of OKC's wages for similar jobs. That's my interpretation. I think that's the plain language, but obviously SMG could debate that. I don't know that they've expressed an interest in debating that, but I mean, any time there's language that's, you know, open to interpretation, different people could interpret it that way, but that's my view.
So what is the course of action? Let's say that ASM had one of their contractors, like Levy or Janice King. Is my on? What is, what would be the course of action if one of their contractors, we find out, is not following along and paying those wages? What would a worker, or what would someone in the arena do?
Yeah, I think my perspective on it would be that they could approach the contractor first. I mean, you know, talk with them, talk with ASM, or approach us and let us know, and we could look into it. The fact that it refers to employees, I know, has different interpretation, but it's, the contract is with ASM, and they only have employees, the contractors are not their employees. And so it's something they could bring to us, we could review that, but the employees are working in this contract in reference, in my mind, would be their employees of ASM. They could come forward to us, we would research that and then work with them to identify a resolution.
So, but the mayor, I mean, you just heard something different from the mayor. And I.
Or are we? That's why you have lawyers.
Yeah.
Everybody's got to say something a little different.
Well, I just, so, well, first, I want to thank the people who came and spoke today. You know, for the last, you know, almost two years, this peace agreement was a bit of an obsession with mine, and through those years, I've spoken with each of you, and thank you especially to the representative, but, and our school board member, his elected officials, but so too just, you know, people in the public. I'll just remind everyone, there were three components, you'll recall, that we borrowed specifically from the city of Milwaukee. We borrowed those because several council members, mayor, the Thunder toured Milwaukee earlier in the summer of '23 to get some ideas for what the new arena would look like. So I simply turned to one of their components, which was a community benefits agreement. That's all I did. That's all I did. I think Councilwoman Nice and Carter were on that trip. Councilwoman Nice mentioned something called a community benefits agreement to me. It took us a year, council, you'll remember, to even find details on it. It was a thing. But we met with the Bucks, the Milwaukee Bucks, who operate their arena, and, like, literally the owners, we met with them, which was wild. I don't think we, I didn't realize until about five, 10 minutes on the call who we were talking to, and I was like, oh, be real professional now. But then they just walked us through the three components. One of them, I will continue to advocate for, you know, keep that fight, but that was a labor peace agreement, which just said simple neutrality, that the Bucks agreed they would not hire a consultant to engage in a anti-union campaign if the workers in their arena ever decided they wanted to hold an election for union representation. It was that simple. And the exchange for that deal was that the workers would not go on strike. That was the agreement, and the Bucks, in the MBA, said, that's great. So that's one thing, and we'll fight that fight another day, but it is the other two that are in front of us right now. And I guess I want to speak very clearly to the council, mayor, city manager, but also to my mother. She was the one who kind of asked me to do this work, you'll remember. She's a huge Thunder fan, huge Thunder fan, and she knew that I would have some issues about public dollars going to, and that's what I did with the community benefits agreement. There was really just two simple things that they had in there. One was, and that's fine, you all, some of you disagree with it, I understand that, but, I mean, I do, but again, what Milwaukee did, and we borrowed from Milwaukee, and this council approved it already, eight to one, and one of those things was that all jobs in the arena, all jobs, all jobs, and I'm going to have a really difficult time today, I think, if that's not clear to everybody. It wasn't my will, it was borrowing from the framework in Milwaukee, and I need the residents of OKC to know that, I need the council to please understand that. This was not an up for interpretation, it was all jobs in the arena, all jobs, the janitors, the cooks, everybody. The idea was that you would work in the arena in Milwaukee, and typically low-wage jobs would find, I think I heard the word dignity, that they would be paid essentially for the dignity of their work, of the scrubbing of the toilets and the urinals, for the cooking of the burritos, for the washing of the walls. And in Milwaukee, that was important, because they had had a hollowed-out manufacturing class, and so the jobs that did have good benefits, like healthcare and retirement and wages, once those got outsourced to Mexico and China, you had neighborhoods all across Milwaukee that suddenly found themselves hollowed out without good jobs, and then rose the violence in those neighborhoods. So it was poverty and violence linked with one another. So with the new arena, they said, well, we'll give jobs that are typically low-wage the dignity that they deserve. I'm just, by the way, I researched all this in the last two years. I did not know all this until I really poured myself into this agreement. And so we just borrowed a similar framework and said, okay, well, we too have parts of Oklahoma City. I remember General Motors used to be here, many of you with good memories know that. So we used to also have a pretty strong manufacturing class that had benefits and these sorts of things, and that's gone. And some of our neighborhoods have fallen into a lot of struggle because of that. And so the benefits agreement simply says, it just really does, that two things, we create a hiring program, we don't reinvent the will, we bring together community partners, Metro Tech, OCCC, et cetera, right? Work-ready, CEO work, Stell Rogers training, right? And we create a plan, just a plan, an intentional plan of how we're going to reach those workers in those parts of town to let them know the good news that we have an arena that's going to open, and they can come work in it. They can be a janitor, they can be a cook, they can be whatever they want, and they're going to get paid wages commensurate with the city of OKC. I hope I'm being as clear as I can, I hope I'm not, I'm not trying to use academic language, but that's the two things that I'm very proud, and my mother should be very proud, that this council got behind, and the community members, when we voted on it, came up here one after the other and advocated for it. Even people who were against the arena liked the idea of a hiring program and the wages. So all I'm asking for today are kind of two things. One is just that, you know, ASM's already come to me, the operator, and there's like, we want to, you know, have an intentional plan, work together to create an intentional plan of what that outreach to these underserved neighborhoods would look like. That's just one ask. And then the other is just kind of clarification that, you know, these jobs, all the jobs, we would never, when we wrote that agreement, city manager, it would, we would never have thought, who would have thought that you would say, you would just know that the Bucks operate their arena, and then everyone in that arena gets the wages? The idea that suddenly you're going to carve out these provisions, saying, well, but if you're a contractor, you're something less than, that would never. We often debate, what did our founding fathers mean with our founding documents? We don't know until we debate, because they're dead. Today, as one of the authors of that work, with one of our lawyers who's right here, I can tell you what the intention was, all means all. This is not a debate. So what do I need to do? Those are just my two questions, sir. Just like, what? And by the way, I, again, I can't, I'm with Senator, oh, Senator, Councilman Pennington, I am very proud of the two things that are in there. I am very grateful, and I'm ready to get to work on creating that hiring program and being intentional, but I also just want that clarification. And the people who are against the wages, you can be against it, but they're already in there, so.
Good.
Well, I mean, I, we already sort of have a motion, excuse me, we already have a motion that's been proposed. Do you wish to pursue that, Councilman Carter?
I do.
Okay, so we kind of figured out what that would look like. So on page 23 of the executed agreement with SMG is item 18, items J and K. And if I understand correctly, Councilman Carter, your motion would be to delete those items from the agreement with SMG, and essentially implicit in that is directing the city manager to come to new execution of the agreement with SMG. They've already signed it. I think it's fair to say that we would not expect them to, we would expect them to accept the agreement with or without those items.
Yes.
I don't think that's a deal breaker for them.
No.
Wait, I'm sorry, I don't have that agreement in front of me. Are you literally suggesting right now to remove the hiring program and the wages from the agreement? Is that, are those the two items?
So this is item E on the PPA agenda, it's, his motion is to remove items 18J and K, which are on page 23 of the agreement, from the agreement.
So the two items of the community benefits agreement that were approved as part of the community benefits agreement, this vote would be to remove those wage protections and the idea of going out to the neighborhoods in some capacity to recruit people for arena jobs. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you should ask.
Yes.
I just wanted to note that clarification. So in other words, I'm asking for just a solidification of, like, a plan to go reach out to them and to protect those wages. Yes, Ms. Looper, that is, I see your face.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
One is, the existing language, I think, does give us the ability to continue to be empowered to work forward with a workforce intermediary. It gives us the opportunity to work with our colleagues from across the city to address getting to those underserved communities that could benefit from these quality jobs. And so I'm satisfied, after having several meetings with our attorneys, that the existing language that's in there is sufficient to meet those goals. What I'll say to my colleagues who are in support of removing these provisions is, this is a negotiated agreement. I understand that you, running a business, may not want these provisions, but we negotiated these provisions, and ASM has agreed to them. So you may have a philosophical disagreement with this idea, and I understand that. I don't agree with it, but I respect it. But I remind you that ASM has agreed to these provisions. They are in support of these provisions. If they're okay with it, then why wouldn't we, as the council, say, that's fine? They don't believe it inhibits their ability to execute, they don't believe it inhibits their ability to operate this quality facility for the citizens of Oklahoma City, so if they don't, why don't we say okay to them? It seems like a minimum ask. Again, it's not, we're doing this with respect to ASM's feelings about how to proceed, and they are in support. So I think we should keep that in mind before we vote.
And I'll just add one final thing. ASM has done this work, I'm sorry, Milwaukee's done it, but ASM has done this work all across the country. They've literally created workforce intermediaries. They have, Detroit, you name it. So to Councilman's observation, ASM's already okay with what we're doing right now, but also their partners around the rest of the country have literally done this. So that's all I would add, is that, and that's what we could study, is how have they done it in other places? How have they reached their underserved youth and their underserved communities, unemployed and underemployed? The language is literally, there are areas and people of Oklahoma City that are experiencing underemployment and unemployment, and how do we connect them to these arena jobs? That's it! That's the, that's what Milwaukee and that's what ASM has done in other places, council, I'm sorry.
James, I really, I really love your passion around this, and so here's what I'm hearing back and forth, and that is, everyone wants there to be fair wages and there to be dignity in your positions. That's not the, that's not the point of contest. The point of contest is, should it be regulated in a agreement like this? And what we've heard is, there is no problem from the people working there, right? This is not, we have a great, we have a great business that we are working with, that is treating people with dignity and respect and is paying fair wages. And so why is there a need for language in an agreement if the experience is already a great experience? If the relationship, if the business is already stepped up and is doing what they're supposed to be doing historically, and we expect future? Why would we get involved in a regulatory framework which could set a precedence for other agreements? And so I would say, we have a great partnership with ASM, and they're doing exactly what you want. Like, we are seeing this already lived out. I mean, I haven't heard any complaints to Councilman Carter's point from people that work there. And what I've seen is teachers working an extra job, and that's the thing, it's fun, it's getting out of the classroom, it's providing extra income to support their family. It's a single mom of four getting that extra job to help cover costs or cover, you know, basic needs. When we start putting in additional regulations, we create the potential for unintended consequences. And if there's an issue, we want to address it, but we don't have an issue, that I've heard.
Councilwoman, can I interject? Councilman, what was, can you speak to the data that the chamber presented some time ago on this issue of workforce wages and ability to pay bills?
Sure, so when we, thank you, and Councilwoman Neighbors, when we studied this, when the Chamber of Commerce came and presented to our working group, they found that we have 70% of Oklahoma City public school graduates who do not go to college. That's the first thing they found, 70, 7-0%. That'd be forgivable if they were going to then the Metro Techs or the Career Techs or not, 70%. The second thing they presented is that 37% of our workforce-eligible population is disconnected from the workforce. That includes the disabled, caretakers, veterans, people with justice-involved backgrounds, felonies. And to the representative's point he spoke earlier, a lot of, the majority of those folk are Southside OKC. They're not limited to, but that's where the majority are. So we have a hidden workforce right now that's disconnected from work. It's not because they're lazy, it's, again, they're veterans, they're caretakers, right, taking care of children, the elderly, family members, the disabled, which, again, having Adele Rogers at the table here would probably go a long way, because they have a proven track record of connecting people to employment when they have a disability. So no, you have, the problem then thusly is that we have a disconnected, hidden workforce, again, chamber's own data, from employment. You have youth who are graduating from your schools who are, again, disconnected from these longer-term pieces of employment, and that's, you have this opportunity to connect those folk to work. And so, again, you might not be hearing people, this is not about our people complaining in the arena as workers, this is about getting workers, new workers, to join them in this new arena to work there.
So are all the other employees going to lose their job?
I don't think they are. I don't know exactly how it will work when ASM moves into their new arena. I don't know who they retain, I don't know who they're, I just know that we have asked them to go out into the community to recruit new workers to go, I'm hoping to work alongside the existing workers would be my hope and expectation. I don't think there's going to get pink slips suddenly.
And I, just one sec, I would like to also add, you know, the piece about, that I constantly have heard, I mean, since day one of this conversation, is that, oh, these are just folks doing second jobs. Well, we don't know that for sure. We've never been provided information about.
There's 85 full-time positions there and 400 part-time.
Okay. Again, how many, we don't know how many of those folks are, those part-time jobs are being used as supplementary income versus I'm literally cobbling together multiple part-time jobs to pay my bills. We don't know that information. And even if, even if it is a teacher doing this as a part-time job, they still, they still deserve to be paid commensurate with any other city public facility job that they might get part-time. They might work at, like, a pool in the summer, and they, for the city, and again, this is, we are subsidizing this to the tune of $10 million a year out of our general fund, and some of that is. our general fund, and some of that is because, one, I think all of these agreements should be negotiated so all of the operating costs are fully covered before ASM or the Thunder get to start making profit off of a, of a public building. So this is about our public investment, and I think to one of the, what one of the speakers said about, you know, businesses will cut costs to make ends meet, and that, one of those costs that is often incredibly negotiable is wages. And so this gives us the opportunity to protect our investment, our people. We're saying that things that other cities have done is not good enough for our residents to protect and have some protection in some negotiated written language saying that this is what this operator of this building, that the public is paying with their tax dollars to subsidize and to subsidize a private business, has the protections of this, this wage agreement. So it's just, the conversation about, well, it's part-time and everyone's smiling and happy, you know, I do a lot of things and I look like I'm happy and I'm smiling because I'm supposed to and I'm supposed to be there and I'm supposed to put on a good face, but I'm frustrated or upset. People, the anecdotes, and to be fair, we've, I've spoken with some anecdotes, but that's because we've not been provided or given information, and, and some of it is because in this labor peace agreement conversation, groups could not provide it to the staff and council members that were involved. And so we're all sort of operating off of our own assumptions, but this, again, it goes back to this is public money subsidizing the operations of this building, and if we can't at least agree that something, again, ASM has already put their pen to the paper on and agreed, it, it just feels like we're saying that our population, our residents don't, don't deserve this protection from the, the people that they have elected to protect this public investment.
And again- I disagree completely. Whenever you put in more regulations and more strings, costs of everything go up. So when you continue to get in the way of letting business operate and do what it does best, you're going to make it more difficult down the road. And to, to Councilwoman Neighbors' point, the unintended consequences that we're not seeing and not viewing, we start here, we start doing this on everything that we do, and it's the trickle-down effect. And we end up becoming like a Milwaukee where things are stupid expensive. They have things that are going crazy. Most of the people now are leaving there and going to work in Chicago. Chicago's got its own issues. We don't want to be that.
I just, again-
I think, when I'd say we don't want to be that, the, the one thing I think everybody needs to remember, since the Thunder came to town, when they first got here, we were the 40th largest city in the United States. Today, we're the 20th largest. We are rated the number one place to start a business, the number one city with populations over 500,000 to start a business. Great things have happened since the Thunder came to this town, and I want to support them, I want to help them, I want to help new businesses be created because of the Thunder. I don't want to overregulate any of those businesses. Thank you.
Well, and I will just say again, I will just say again, that, a few things. One is that this is already a negotiated agreement. It's shocking right now, quite frankly, shocking to hear any conversation about pulling back on a negotiated agreement. And let me tell you who the partners were in that agreement. The community. When we voted in December of 2023, the community went to vote, that 71% who approved this arena, they went to the ballot box believing that an eight-to-one-approved community benefits agreement, they didn't know if a labor peace agreement was going to be in there because there was a working group to study that. So they were prepared for it to or to not to be in there. They factored that into their vote, but the other two parts to their vote was that, yeah, there's going to be a hiring program to reach out to workers somehow to get them jobs, and there's going to be wages commensurate with the city of OKC. So voters went to the ballot box with that factored into their vote. If we remove those two provisions, those two wins, those two things my mother is excited about, even the people who spoke today are excited about those things, if we remove those two things, we are removing the idea that making sure the community benefits from this agreement. And by the way, I think it is really cool that those wages are in there. I think it's incredible that we have a hiring program in there. I think that your, your words, all of our words, will benefit our people, our most underserved people will benefit from this agreement. It's just as clear as the rain to me that those two items are good, but most importantly, this council already approved them. Voters, voters went to the ballot box factoring in, we're going to keep the Thunder and we got a community benefits agreement in there. Voters, I mean, just, both of them were true, they wanted to keep the Thunder, and people who had maybe a little bit of skepticism probably said, cool, well, we got a community benefits agreement in there. So I just think those are really great things that, and, and all I want to do going forward is just work with ASM, who's come to the table and said, we think this is great too, to, to protect all that. The final thing, too, this idea that the Milwaukee or whomever is struggling, their, their arena and their workers are thriving, there is data on that. I've researched that data. They're not, they're fine. They're, they're more than fine. Councilman, I feel like you were going to say something, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, just real quickly, I don't, I, I really hate this issue because I definitely see both sides of it. And to me, the, the most conflicting thing about an agreement like this, you know, an inch-thick agreement, is that there are things in it I'm not tickled about. There's other things in it I'm absolutely super excited about, but anytime you have a complex agreement like this, it's always going to be, you know, Councilman Cooper, you didn't get everything you wanted.
That's exactly right.
Right?
Yeah.
But you can see that, hey, I've, I got some good things in there, let's move forward, let's make it happen.
Let's do it.
And that's kind of where I am at right now, but I totally understand the concept of requiring a private business to do something. One little part of that I struggle with, it is, it's a city-owned facility. And so that one kind of makes me question it a little bit. And then on the, the big thing on the $10 million that you think we're giving the Thunder every year, that doesn't really count the other money that's drawn into this city, in my opinion, because of the Thunder. You look at local restaurants downtown, go in the Omni before a game, that, that place is so packed, it's, it's crazy. And that all just generates a ton of revenue, a ton of attention for this city, that again, draws in more businesses and creates better jobs for our citizens, which we all love. So with, I would just say for myself, with ASM agreeing to this already, I just, I'd, I kind of prefer, let's keep the agreement the way it is and move forward and see what happens. So that's where I'm at.
All right. I suggest we vote on the motion, and I would add, you know, I think to what has already been said, just to say that people did, as Councilman Cooper said, sort of rely upon this information. It's, you know, may seem kind of silly. It's page 23, subsection 18, subsection J and K, you know, you can really get bogged down in the legalese of it, but these two concepts, I definitely heard a lot about in December of 2023. A lot of people relied upon it. We've agreed to it, the city manager's gotten comfortable with it, SMG's obviously agreed to it. So I'm going to oppose the amendment, but I do think, Councilman Cooper, you also will, should this be preserved, I mean, I think you've got to recognize, you've, your support has eroded, not strengthened, since the eight-one vote in 2023, and continue to work with your colleagues, you know, to really, on these topics, but, but let's take a vote and see where we stand. So if, we've got a motion to, if I may restate it, to delete from page 23 of the executed agreement, number 18, items J and K. What am I on right now? There we go. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Hey, it didn't give me the option to vote.
Sorry, it's backed up again, let's, where are we now?
I still don't want it on.
We're still in the middle of a vote. Okay, fails four to five. We're back on the items. Are there any other comments or questions?
Only to say, thank you to those of you who are moving forward with the compromise. Councilman Stone, your comments really ring, ring a bell with me. Like, we didn't always get what we wanted here, and sometimes compromise just has to be what it is. To the council members who are thinking other things, here's my commitment, and I'm guessing everyone who spoke will say this to you too, you have my full commitment to keep working on this, to make sure that the resident in each of our respective wards know about these arena jobs. I will knock whatever you need me to door, and I will sit with whatever group you need me to, to let them know the good news that there are Thunder jobs available for them. Oh, and Mayor, that was to you, so you, I heard.
I, okay, so what I suggest is, we're still kind of on B through E. I think we should take them as individual votes, and then we'll kind of return to the rest of the PPA agenda. Is there any other comments or questions relative to these agreements, items B through E? Okay, then let's take them one at a time. Let's take item B. So to remind you, this is the use license agreement, sometimes called the lease. This is the agreement that codifies 25 years for the Thunder in the new arena. This is like the crux of the matter. This is what we've worked for several years now to establish is a long-term relationship with major league professional sports that extends for another generation beyond 2050. That's what item B brings us. So let's see if we can get a motion on that. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And then item C is a preferential rights agreement with the city and Loud City Development. This relates to the existing arena site and its future development. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And then item D is a food and beverage agreement between the city, SMG ASM, and the professional basketball club, the Thunder, as described earlier. Obviously, food and beverage sales at the arena. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And then item E, this is the facilities management agreement between the city and SMG ASM over the operations of the new arena. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And we will do all that again in, in a little bit, because we have these same items under the council agenda, but presumably we won't need to discuss it as much. We also have a presentation on the PPA agenda relative to the PPA budget.
Yes. On item G, this is the PPA budget, similar to the MFA budget, a little bit different in that it's used in managing some of our facilities, but allows us to issue debt or to have long-term contracts. And so Steve Akins with Budget Office gives a quick presentation overview on the PPA budget.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, City Manager. As Craig mentioned, the PPA provides the funding mechanism for a lot of the things that you just discussed, and plus fairgrounds, redevelopment, golf courses, MAPS-related contracts. First of all, the revenue, you'll, you'll see a big piece of that as for transfers from various funds, $74 million of that is what you just discussed that came from MAPS, moved over to the PPA to facilitate the seed money, if you will, to start the NBA Arena A and E. The, if you'll move to the next slide, expenditures by category, the capital I outlay, $77.1 million, 53%, $74 million of that is the fund balance that was transferred from MAPS. Other services charges were $31.7 million, and they include the ASM contract, as well as other various activities for fairgrounds, golf courses, and the North Canadian River maintenance, and then transfers are primarily between golf courses. And expenditures by function, MAPS contracts at $90 million. There again, the big number is for the NBA new arena. Golf course expenditures are $25.5 million, are primarily salaries and wages, water, sewer, refuges, and contingency funds for golf courses. Fairgrounds expenditures are $21.3 million or 15%. They include the debt service costs, repairs or maintenance, and excess funds returned to the hotel tax fund after they've spent that money. And that is all that I have for the PPA. I'll answer any questions.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
We can take a vote now to kind of adopt the rest of the PPA agenda, which would be items A, F, G, and H. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we are on item nine, the consent docket. There are no presentations. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull out for a presentation or vote? Question?
Yes, I'd like to vote separately on item A.
Item A, okay. If there's nothing else, we'll do that first. We will, let's take a motion on item 9A. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes six to one. And then the remainder of the consent docket, we could take a motion on that. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through L we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11 are items for the individual consideration. Item 11A has several items related to a rezoning at 17841 North Pennsylvania from R1 to PUD 2053. There's an amendment to the, two amendments to the master design statement as well. This was deferred three previous times. And Councilman Stone cipher, there is one resident signed up to speak.
Would it be okay if David Box came up first and kind of explained the latest? There's been a lot of negotiations, discussions, and then we'll hear from the citizen. There's been a lot, I, I would say this, I will applaud a lot of the homeowners in these neighborhoods that came together, that met with the developer. There's been a lot of changes to this proposed development since its, its genesis, its beginning. And I think that it's best when people come together, and it's best when people try to resolve their, their problems and differences in a meeting together than sending letters and emails to one another. And so if you could kind of walk through that process, I sure would appreciate it, David.
Sure. David Box, 525 Northwest 11th Street, here on behalf of the applicant. As the, the councilman said, this is a, a project that drew a lot of discussion with the neighbors. We negotiated with them before planning commission. We had a successful vote at planning commission and then continued to discuss and negotiate with them. Bruce Lawrence was the gentleman who was kind of the lead. I want to thank him for all of his efforts. He spent a lot of time and effort on this, and in the end, what we ended up with was a modified development that we believe will be compatible with the area and provide a wonderful opportunity for additional residential units in this area. So some of the major changes, we have a significant landscape buffer that surrounds the site where it's adjacent to a single-family. The only single-family homes that exist immediately adjacent to this are south and west, and so you'll see there that we've got a pretty significant landscape buffer, and then we have pushed back those homes. So we have at least a 60-foot, approximately 60 feet from the first residential structure. Then we modified the height to make the structures all two-story. Then, we modified the height to make the structures all two-story at a maximum. We then required a masonry wall to surround the site where it's adjacent to a single-family residential or the school that's there. We've increased the landscaping. So, all of those things were placed into the PUD master design statement. I had an email, as well as a text message from Mr. Lawrence last week, thanking us for our efforts and officially withdrawing his protest on behalf of his neighborhood, as well as the other neighborhoods that were involved. So, I do want to thank Councilman Stone Cypher as well, he was involved in all those conversations. And again, I think what we have now is a project that is both compatible, but will also be a benefit to the area. Two-story maximum height, yes, sir.
About many of the neighborhood, was it was first proposed as a three-story site, and the developer, just after looking at it, decided that the project could still be done with only two stories. So, with that being said, I'd like to have, Mayor, if it's okay with you, the citizen have an opportunity to speak, please.
Yes.
That's what I just said.
So, VEDA?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't speak very loud. I asked the mayor to have you speak at this time. Yes, yes.
Are you, are you VEDA TruX?
Yes.
Okay. You have three minutes.
And, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I oppose planned unit development 2053. It's eight, okay. Its purpose is to build high-rise apartments on 19 acres at the intersection of 178th Street, which is also called Edmund Road, and North Pennsylvania Avenue. The area has many subdivisions of single-family homes that are all open to Pennsylvania Avenue, including those labeled on that diagram as PUD 838 and 651. They include Valencia, Mulholland, Villas at Copper Creek, Copper Creek Crossing, Silverhawk, Thin Wick, and Taber's New Single Family Subdivision. The home prices range from $250,000 to $750,000. Also using Pennsylvania Avenue, Edmund School District, two elementary schools, one middle school, and a church school. The riot lanes on both 178th and Penn are blocked to drop off and pick up children. The PUD uses vague wording. 9.17 says, "A specific plan shall not be required." There's no description for roof type and material, parking, or drainage. It would bring an additional 600 people, assuming two people per unit, plus a few children. Additional costs to government are traffic light, sidewalks, and bus service, which now ends at Memorial Road. Also, emergency personnel and increased load on utilities. Another land site could have these services already, and the development would be more compatible with surrounding architecture, size, and use. The proposal would cause hazards at a major intersection, increase traffic on Penn, and would reduce property values of area homes. A more welcomed plan would be duplex homes, light commercial, and one-story office buildings. This was done on the north side of 178th, with one-story brick offices before the adjoining Valencia homes. So I ask that you please reject PUD 2053. Questions?
30 seconds remaining.
Ms. TruX, I want to really thank you for coming down here today. I know it's not the easiest thing to get down here on an early Tuesday morning, and I appreciate your patience in waiting to speak. David, do you want to say anything in response to that?
Sure. So, in terms of drainage, we'll have to meet the new drainage ordinance. No building permit will be issued without first showing how we meet all the requirements that Public Works will place on us from a drainage standpoint. She mentioned the specific plan, so in the PUD, under 9.17, a specific plan is required. So what that means is, before we can start construction, we'll have to make application that will go to the planning commission. The planning commission will have a public hearing to review what it is we propose to build, to see if in fact it complies with the PUD. And then, in terms of roofing material, section 9.11 specifies that each structure in the PUD shall have a Class C roofing or better. Class C roofing is a fire rating. So, we have specified all of those items within the PUD.
Ms. TruX, would you like to say anything else?
No, we just really would like to not have three-story buildings across the street, all these single-family homes around us.
The great thing, and maybe you haven't been told this, but it will no longer be three stories. It's going to be two.
But they're not all two.
They are all two. We made that modification, revised the MDS. Staff is in possession of it. It is a maximum of two-story height.
Yep. I just want, I just want the council to know, we've probably had, between Debbie Martin and I, 50 to 100 phone calls, conference calls, meetings on this, and it was really productive. It wasn't easy, but it was productive. I want to thank Bruce Lawrence, Ed Leoni, Liz Miranda, Leanne Brown, Stephen Hooper, all these people that live in the community, that spent hours and hours coming down here and being on conference calls to come up with a solution. And because I think everybody worked together and we came up with a solution, I'm going to, I've got to make some amendments, as the mayor pointed out. So I'd first move to the amendment to the master design statement found at 11A1. That's my first motion.
So, motion to adopt item 11A1, the amendment to the master design statement. We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Now, I presume you'd like to move motion, move item 82?
Yes, please.
Second amendment? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And now, I'd like to move for 11A3 with the two amendments.
Sounds good. This is the ordinance on final hearing. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 17902 Southwestern Avenue from AA to PUD 2059. Councilman Hinkle, no one to sign up to speak.
Oh, David, you're up.
This is a lot like what we just heard. There were a lot of protests starting off. I'd like to thank, first off, my planning commissioner, but Mr. Box and Mr. McCowen for working through this. This is a really unique spot in South Oklahoma City. It's going to be the new gateway to South Oklahoma City on Western, when the turnpike goes in. To me, it's kind of a litmus test on how a lot of things work, because we're putting commercial next to multifamily, next to housing, next to ADUs. It's kind of a utopia of a neighborhood, so walk us through it a little bit. I'm in full support. It just, it's a neat deal, so I think the public should hear.
Sure. So this is, the site's down on Western and 179th, or Indian Hills, and it's at the very kind of south end of Oklahoma City. Now, why it's unique is that Indian Hills is about to become a turnpike, and there will be access roads on either side. And so, although now it's in this area that's really, other than the single-family neighborhood you see in the north and the east, it's really dominated by agriculture. What you're going to see in the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years is similar to what happened up around Memorial when the Kilpatrick Turnpike went in. So, here we have water, sewer, and so what Mr. McCowen and his team have designed is a true mixed-use development, where we have a single-family residential with significant green space, as you can see on this exhibit, a mix of commercial, a mix of some multifamily. We had a community meeting prior to planning commission that was fairly well-attended. And when we went to planning commission, I don't believe we had anybody show up. So we had multiple changes that we made to the master design statement prior to planning commission, submitted that back to staff, and ultimately went to planning commission with no protest, and then a recommendation of planning commission, which was unanimous for approval, that we now come before you. So, it's an area of the city that's going to rapidly change, much like a big chunk of Ward III has changed with the turnpike going through there. I expect to see similar outcomes here with the availability of sewer and water. So, we think we have a development that'll be a wonderful gateway into Oklahoma City, and one that is, again, supported by your planning commission, as well as the neighbors at this point.
And with that, I'll move for approval.
Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 16300 Southeast 52nd, going from AA to PUD 2062. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. This is basically a lot split on a five-acre lot. Maybe you'd call it an ADU, I don't know, in the future. But, anyway, with that, I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 10205 Northeast 63rd, from R1 to PUD 2064. Councilman Pennington, no one to sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a PUD that's asking to create a little horse hospital. It's actually going to be next to another horse hospital, so it's appropriate. We're getting to the last of the items where I will have voted twice on the same item, so I am happy to make a motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E was previously deferred, which brings us to item F. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 3223 Northwest 178th, from PUD 1891 to SPUD 1705. This was deferred from May 20th. And Councilmen Stone Cypher, do you have, we do have someone who's signed up to speak.
Who's coming to speak, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry? What, item, we're on item F?
That's fine, that somebody came down to speak, that's great. I will say that after several of the parties have talked, we're going to defer this for further discussions, but, oh, is it?
Call Milwaukee.
He's not here. He left, okay. All right, so, we've had conversations with several of the members of the community and the developer, and so we are going to defer this for two council meetings.
Be July 15th.
Is that two council meetings? Okay, thank you. So I'd move to defer at this time.
All right, we have a motion to defer item F to July 15th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 13401 South MA from PUD 1800 to SPUD 1716. Councilman Hinkle, no one to sign up to speak.
This is putting some commercial uses on a hard corner, and I'm in full support.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 432 Southeast 44th, from R1 to SPUD 1721. Councilman Stone, no one to sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is basically putting a car lot in on Southeast 44th, so with that, I'll move for
We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. All right, 11I is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 13600 Memorial Park Drive, from SPUD 777 and Lake Hefner Parkway Scenic Corridor to SPUD 1726 and Lake Hefner Parkway Scenic Corridor. Councilman Stone Cypher, we do have one person signed up to speak.
This is item 11I. I'm going to have to recuse myself on this, and so I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we all can see this is for further development of a restaurant that I believe is consistent with all of the other design that is in this area on Memorial Road. I don't, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. As the original developer of this, of this business park, I was just, want to put on public notice that that, that property, I'm for this project, I just want to make that crystal clear, but this project is subject to CCNRs from the Memorial Business Park, so I just want to put that on public record, and hopefully we can work together to make sure that we get the restaurant put in and follow the CCRs for that, for that business park. That's it.
Okay. All right.
I have no further comment. Mayor, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 1004 Northeast 7th from R2 to SPUD 1727. Councilman Pennington, no one to sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This is consistent with the, developed, with the zoning that's in the area, just adding two duplexes as opposed to just one. I'm in full support. Again, it's consistent with everything in the area, so I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, item K is an ordinance on final hearing establishing a parking restriction on the south side of Northwest 29th, near Ann Arbor. Councilman Cooper.
Yep, it's pretty procedural, so I'm just going to move for approval. One day, these will be controversial, and we'll have an old-fashioned.
Don't speak that into existence. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11L is an ordinance on final hearing establishing a 30-minute time limited parking on the south side of Northwest 50th, near Young's. Councilman Cooper.
Okay, this one won't be controversial either, maybe, let's find out.
Move for approval.
The suspense.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item M is an ordinance on final hearing establishing reserved parking for the physically disabled at 50th and Young's. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, let's go. I was trying to, you make it.
No, I like it, that's great.
Okay.
We should all make motions, everyone. Got a motion and a second. I'm going to say it's passing unanimously. It's not on my screen, but it is up there. All right, 11N is an ordinance on 11N is an ordinance on final hearing establishing 60-degree angle parking within a setback parking area near 50th and Young's. Councilman Cooper.
Yep. Let's do this. We're going. My screen is...
Yeah. Are we all frozen?
There we go.
There we go. Okay. Now we need to bring up a motion for item N.
I'm ready when you are, Mr. DeVille. Thank you for laughing at that joke. Okay.
Have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
All vote yes. Mine's frozen.
Item O is an ordinance on final hearing establishing reserved parking for the physically disabled near Northwest 67th and Western. Councilman Cooper. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Item P is an ordinance on final hearing establishing reserved parking for the physically disabled on the east side of North Lindsay, near Northeast 35th. Councilman Pennington.
Same as Councilman Cooper. I move approval.
Cast your votes.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. Item 11Q is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the second of two meetings for this proposed ordinance change that amends our municipal code relating to roofing permits and contractors. We heard about this new inspection for re-roofings at our last meeting. Does the council have any comments or questions today, or do they wish to move forward on a motion to adopt this ordinance change?
I move approval, Mayor.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item 11R, 1 and 2. So 2 is the ordinance that I think was deferred at least once, this is actually the third meeting, relating to some fees. There's an amendment proposed today. Do we maybe, want to hear about the amendment and then maybe...
That'd be great.
We also have some residents assigned to speak, but maybe we'll do the amendment.
You're going to go ahead and talk about the amendment, Jeff, and just give us a quick overview of what we're proposing to amend after the discussions that we went back to with council's direction.
Yes, thank you. Jeff Butler, Planning Director. There was concern expressed previously about the fact that with the home sharing fee, which is $1,100, proposed to be $1,100, consistent with, with other special exceptions. The special exception fee for home sharing is proposed to be $1,100. There is concern that it would be burdensome, given the fact that it has to be renewed every three years or so, sometimes less than that. So we, we have since met with and heard from operators. There's a compromise before you, an amended ordinance on your, in your packet that would retain the $1,100 for the initial application, and then renewals would be $750. So that would reduce the burden on, on operators. So that's really the only change that we proposed today, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Libby Ross, live in Norman, Oklahoma, and I own and operate multiple Airbnbs and short-term rentals across the state of Oklahoma, many of them here locally. My company, not only do we manage for people and help co-hosting, but we also help bring people to compliance, even if we're not going to continue to manage them. I'm also the state leader for Airbnb, the community volunteer leader, so I try to stay very involved with hosts, trying to keep them at compliance. So I just do want you to know that I am here to advocate for responsible hosts. So I think today, it echoes clear over and over that there is so much buzz and excitement going on in Oklahoma City. It's contagious. You can't, but you, if you can't fill it and you can't give it back out, I don't, I don't know what you're doing here in Oklahoma City. So I do believe change is on the horizon to be able to take in the tourism that is to come, the changes going to come. My biggest concern is that we have offered this new system, the Deckard system, coming in. We've been promised this system. I'm excited about it because I don't want to stand next to bad players. I don't want to stand next to bad hosts who aren't doing what they are supposed to do as responsible business owners. So every home is his own little business. I love that you guys see the hospitality industry and what, how important it is to Oklahoma City. So my suggestion and my offering here is that we wait for the Deckard system to come into place. Let that come into place. Let that, see how that rolls out and what kind of system that brings to the short-term rental industry, and see if that helps responsible hosts shine and maybe kind of pulls out the bad players automatically. So that's my suggestion and my request, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Smith, 1209 Northwest 47th Street. I'm a short-term rental host in Ward Two, and I want to thank the council and the city staff for the opportunity to work together to create an amended proposal for this fee structure for home sharing. I do think it's far better than the first ordinance that was presented, and I wanted to recognize everyone for finding a compromise. As we've seen today, you don't always get what you want, but there is a middle ground. That said, I understand why some hosts will still be upset. I'm probably not the most popular opinion here. $1,100 is a steep point of entry, and even the renewal fee is more than double, but I get it. You know, it's hard to accept when our short-term rental businesses contribute millions of dollars to the city's tourism economy, but we don't see very much support from the tourism board in return. At the meeting last week, the Visit OKC shared their updated marketing plan, and not once did we hear a mention of short-term rentals as part of their accommodation strategy. It was all about hotel nights, and that's a little frustrating. Like hotels and motels, our short-term rental guests are paying that increased lodging tax, and as hosts, we have the burden of returning to the Board of Adjustment, sometimes year after year or every three years if we're lucky. But again, I think the amended proposal is a step in the right direction, and as someone who has to go through the Board of Adjustment process myself, I accept that this fee is part of my business responsibility. Like I mentioned last, at the last meeting, having a short-term rental is part of our family's retirement plan, but as I'm currently between jobs, we're using that rental income to supplement our own mortgage. And I heard others express similar concerns about affordable housing, but I've mulled this over, and with my family, we are not stuck. If we are in a financial crunch, we can sell our properties. So with that said, I agree with the updated proposal and wanted to thank the council and the city for helping us find a compromise moving forward.
Thank you. David Svedman.
Good morning, Mayor Holt and council. My name is David Svedman, and I'm opposed to the fee increase for both the initial and the renewal applications for short-term rentals. I feel that the, the current fee is adequate, and such an increase could be up to $1,100 and could possibly be annually or every two or three years is financially harmful to Airbnb owners. We own two long-term rentals, or rental houses. We've had them for a long time, and we just had our first Airbnb permitted a couple weeks ago. So I know the rental business, but going into the short term was something we had to think about when we moved forward. Of course, when you work with Airbnb, from my understanding, now you're going to, as a, a host, you're going to get charged a fee, and then the city's going to get sales tax and a percentage, and of course, we as homeowners, we have property taxes, we have health insurance, or excuse me, property insurance. Airbnbs, you know, you're going to have cleaning fees, which obviously you're going to have to have, and of course, you got to think about maintenance and repairs, which obviously is, you know, part of owning a property. And of course, also with Airbnbs, the longer that you have guests stay, your rental income is decreased. They get discounts for that, and of course, that's going to reduce your income as well. And of course, the, the cost of ownership is, operating is why, you know, for long-term is why we, we sold a lot of our portfolio of rental properties and decided, well, let's put our foot in with short-term to see how we can do. And, you know, the market can only bear so much for rent for, you know, people looking for properties, and of course, your homeowner's insurance, your property insurance, everything keeps on going up and up, and of course, if you have an Airbnb, you're going to have those, those same particular costs. What I think should be done is, more should be done to evaluate the fees...
30 seconds remaining.
... as well as how many Airbnbs are out there that are running that aren't permitted or don't have licenses. If those could be identified and bring them into the fold, that would also bring in more revenue and maybe a little bit more oversight so that the Airbnbs that are operating in the city are in compliance, and then when people come from out of state, out of town and using Airbnb, that they're going to have a much better experience. And I think that that would certainly be helpful. And of course...
Thank you, sir. We're over time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
David, David, quick question. You said you just navigated the permitting process?
Yeah.
How, how are we doing? Are we doing a good job? Are there things we can improve on? Were you happy with the process?
It's tedious.
Okay.
But Libby is kind of working on a, a process to try to speed that up, I think, to give people that are, want to do it, to be able to, you know, have a little bit more guidance and handholding.
Thanks for coming here today.
Yep. Thank you very much for your time.
Patricia Ailing? Richard Ailing? Are you Melinda?
I'm Melinda.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Melinda Irwin, and I live at 405 Northwest 16th, and I am a 33-year resident of Mesa Park in Heritage Hills. I was also a member of the focus group that the city had last year to discuss the changes to the ordinance. They never mentioned the possible big fee increase, and this fee study was done in 2022, so I'm not sure why we didn't work through that in the focus group, and it just kind of got thrown at us middle of May via an email. I've always been involved in the rental market here in the metro as an investor and a resident. I feel like the proposed changes don't help us reputable hosts. There are currently approximately 600 licensed hosts in Oklahoma City. Over 50% of those require BOA approval. I watched the BOA last week, and almost everyone only got a one-year permit. I mean, there was only one three-year out of the whole time. Airbnb estimates there are 1,800 Airbnbs in Oklahoma City, so that means 2/3 are unlicensed. I feel these numbers are extremely important, and I agree with Libby. If we would wait till we get the Decker software to make the changes and not just push this through because it's on there, let's, let's find the bad people and don't penalize those of us who are trying to be responsible hosts. Passing this fee will increase will make us one of the most expensive cities in the USA to operate an Airbnb, more expensive than Austin. It makes no sense to me that we're consistently recognized as one of the most affordable cities, but one of the most difficult to operate a short-term rental in. Pro-business. I feel like one comparable example we can all skip behind is Indianapolis. They have a one-time fee of $150. We are one of the few cities that are just requiring the double perm, the licensing and then the special exception permit. Does anyone have any questions for me? Nope. Okay. Thank you.
Richard Ailing?
I'm Richard Ailing. My wife and I were attending this morning. We own two Airbnbs in Oklahoma City. We understand that the council is pretty much determined to pass this ordinance. I appreciate the planning department trying to come up with a good solution. However, the biggest issue in this is that home sharing is still the outlier. We always had, we are the only one out there that has to do this on a continual basis. To our understanding, every other business only has to do this one time. So $1,100 for them is, is one time $1,100. For us, it's ongoing $1,100 plus $750 plus $750 plus $750. That's not equitable, and I think that's really what needs to be addressed by this. Change the ordinance so that we only have to do this one time. There's software that's going to be implemented that's going to police people that are not taking care of their business and move them out, so don't punish the people that are doing it right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. That concludes our residents who signed up to speak. Are there any comments or questions from council?
Craig, could we have someone explain to the audience what we're doing with software and compliance issues, the steps we've taken?
Sure. Brock, is that one? On that, sorry. Jeff can explain that. I know that Kelly has worked on that and led the way on that one. I don't think we have her here today to, to speak to that one, because we didn't expect the question.
Yes.
Big picture.
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff Butler, Planning Director, again. So I believe it was last council meeting, the, the council approved that contract with an, with a, with a contractor to help the city to deal with this issue. We know there, or we don't know exactly how many, but we know there are a lot of home shares that are not registered with the city, and that's an enforcement issue, and that's what they're, that, that contract is designed to do in part, in large part. So we're excited about that because it'll help us get everyone into compliance, help address some of the issues that have been talked about today. I'm not sure precisely the timing on that, but I know it's getting underway, and we hope to make progress quickly so that we can get everybody into compliance, those that need special exceptions can get them, and those that just need a, a regular license can get that as well.
I just wanted the people here today to know that we're, we're making efforts. We've entered into a contract. We're, we have new software that's coming, and we're going to be working on enforcement.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think it's also worth noting here, I, I hear the concerns of our Airbnb operators. I think we've reached a fair compromise on the amount of the fee that's being charged, and I appreciate everyone coming to the table for that. But I, I also think that I'm hearing a, a bigger concern about the frequency of renewals, the standard by which the Board of Adjustment is making that decision about whether or not you're going to be given a, a license for one year or two or three years, and I think that's an opportunity for us to come together and, and work on those issues. I think this, the argument today is about the fees and the amount of the fees, and, I believe, again, a fair compromise has been made, but I would certainly be in support of continuing to have conversations around how we can be fair in the relicensing process, and I'm happy to, to join with, with my neighbors here in further discussions about other changes to the, to the law to, to help do that in a fair way. So I'm in support of this, but, and, and support further conversations about how we can be fair to those licensees of Airbnb.
My comment on this is, if you want to fall asleep, watch a Board of Adjustments meeting because... 'cause the number of people that come and apply for a license after they get caught running an Airbnb is what takes up the time of a Board of Adjustments meeting. And to me, it seems like after they've operated for a year and they don't have any complaints from the neighbors, the Board of Adjustments goes ahead and grants them the three-year license permit where they don't have to come back. So just adding that in there that sadly, 90% of the people coming the first time just either didn't know or just waited till they got caught, 'cause there's no penalty for running an Airbnb without a permit until you get caught and then you just have to come get a permit. So I, I, I'm with Kamal. I think what we've come up with here is a, a pretty good remedy and then to study markets and see what everybody else is doing is, is the way to go on this.
Yeah, Aubrey had one more thing, just to clarify on this, that I think is another issue that will help us in ensuring that, you know, try to reduce that load and that burden of people that are operating outside of the rules. The folks that have talked today are working inside the rules. So I'll let Aubrey share that.
And Councilman Stone suffered to your question about our consultant. They also are gonna provide a 24/7 hotline for people to call in if they're experiencing issues. The consultant will have access to the property manager information so they can coordinate directly with the property manager if there are complaints. They'll also track those complaints, share it with staff. So the way that the Board of Adjustment has asked us to help them in their decision-making is usually the first time somebody comes in for a permit, they'll do that one year, just to see how things go, see if there are any complaints. For the renewal process, what we're hoping is this information will help those good managers and owners, because if there's no record of any complaints, then the Board of Adjustment could feel free to grant the maximum three-year term. So we think that the consultants will also help us with that feedback loop from the community.
If there's no further comments or questions, we could adopt the amendment at R1. We have a motion in a second to adopt the amendment. Amendment passes seven to two. Now we're on the ordinance on final hearing, R2, as amended. We could take a motion on that. We have a motion in a second. Passes eight to one. All right, now we're at item 11S1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we'll advance to the resolution found at S2 declaring that structures are dilapidated. A motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11T1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at T2 declaring the structures are unsecured. A motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11U1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at U2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11V is some final work on the upcoming year's budget. These particular resolutions require two meetings to be heard, and so item V1 is a second public hearing regarding fire sales tax appropriations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at V2 regarding appropriations for the Fire Department for fiscal year 2025, 2026. You heard about this in previous meetings. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. 11W is related to police appropriations. Item 11W1 is a second public hearing regarding police sales tax appropriations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution found at W2 regarding appropriations for the Police Department for fiscal year 2025, 2026, which you've heard about at previous meetings. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Okay, now we are at items X, Y, Z, and AA. These are the exact same items previously voted on under the PPA docket relative to the arena and our long-term relationship with the Thunder. Certainly, you're welcome to make comments if you feel that's necessary, but if not, we can just go ahead and take them one by one with individual votes, starting with item We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Item Y, this is the preferential rights agreement relative to the existing paycom site. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. 11Z is a food and beverage agreement with PPAS, SMGASM, and the Professional Basketball We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And finally, 11AA is fourth amended and restated facilities management agreement between PPA and SMGASM. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. And now, we have items AB and AC and what was already a weighty council agenda. We have our very significant potential investment in our city's core infrastructure. And I know there's a presentation here. I will merely set the stage by making the most high-altitude observation, which is that in our city, as we just experienced going through the budget process, our sales tax is generally used for people, our 5,000 city employees. And the only way, really, that we're able to build and maintain capital in this city is either through our tradition of, of maps and other votes allocated to us, a penny on the sales tax, or our bond issues allowed for under the Constitution, paid off through ad valorem taxes. We do these every decade or so. We had one in 2000, 2007, 2017, and it is time again to do so. And we made the decision in the planning of this, which has really been going on for a year or two, to not pursue a sale, a, a tax increase. That was it. That's always a choice. We decided not to pursue a tax increase. We still have a pretty remarkable capacity that the city manager will talk about even without a tax increase in this presentation. And as before, it's core infrastructure and it's going to meat and potatoes kinda stuff. And we'll hear more about that in a moment, but a lot of work has gone into this and I certainly credit the city manager and the council and really everybody for just getting us to this point where we can introduce it. Final consideration by the council on July 15th, potential election of the voters in October, and we'll handle that in a moment. But first, a presentation about what is the bond issue 2025.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you have said, you know, in our, in our city that's growing, I mean, 621 square miles unfortunately, and hopefully, we're not growing that way geographically, but in growing in population, just the demands and the needs that we have throughout the city and the infrastructure needs that we have, I mean, just reinvesting in our, our community, that the bonds do provide a great way for us to do this. And we do come forward with these about every 10 years historically. This one's a little bit earlier than 10 years. We were able to sell a little faster. The, the 2025 bond is planned to continue the, the growth and continue the investment that we're making within our community, and so that's what we're working towards here. It's a $2.7 billion bond, and we're gonna talk about all the outreach that we did and the work that we've done, working with residents and with stakeholders to try to get feedback so that we could ensure that we're addressing the projects that are there, and then coming back and working with the city council members on identifying specific areas in their wards that they know are challenges that we needed to address. And so we've tried to work through this, as the mayor said. We've had a commitment for many decades for keeping our millage rate at about 16 mills, at an average of about 16 mills. We say it's an average because we aren't setting an exact rate. It's depending upon the bond rates that we get, on growth in property values and how much we're selling in a given year. And so we will continue that commitment and be able to continue this program that does invest, as mayor said, primarily in core infrastructure that we have and that we see and that we use every single day, but it also makes community investments and investments in event venues. And so it's a very broad-reaching bond program. Aubrey McDermott and Debbie Miller are going to make the presentation today. I, I can't begin to name all the staff that have worked on this and worked many, many hours, attended public meetings, participated in this. I'm just so grateful for all of their work, our partners with the attorneys, the bond council and all that have worked with this in creating and structuring this according to the law. And so just grateful for all of the work there. I'm gonna let Aubrey come and present to us the first part of this that talks really about the outreach and what we've done to reach out into the community and how we structured this. And then Debbie will work through talking generally about the projects that we have included in the, in the bond programs.
Thank you, City Manager Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. You'll go to the next slide, Shannon. So just a process timeline overview, as we mentioned, that we started the planning work for the 2025 bond several years ago, and really even before we started intently working on this bond program. Since the last bond program was passed and we knew that certain projects couldn't make the 2017 bond, we've maintained lists of needs across the city. Every time a constituent calls one of you and reports those things, those are forwarded to city staff, we put it into our database. As departments go out and work in the community, doing different plans and processes, we put that into our database. So that database is, it grows over time and it's maintained. And then in about 2023, when it really started in earnest working on the 2025 bond, we started with that package of projects. And we know that we need to build and expand on that, engage the community in priorities. We started engaging council last April on the projects that were important, that they'd been hearing from, from their constituents in their ward. And then in September, between September and January of this last year, we, we had a four-month-long public engagement process. So the 2025 bond public engagement opportunities were expanded beyond what we've ever done before. We hired Gooden Group, Tango PR, and Conjo Concepts to help us put together a package of outreach options so that we could meet people in the community that were already doing events, staff our own in-person meetings, have online meetings, and to give input and ideas for projects in the bond program. We then brought that package back after we got public input and feedback on the projects, worked with city council on a final bond list. Planning Commission just approved that package and recommended to council that we move forward, and then we are here today introducing the bond. So next slide. So this is a snapshot of that community engagement process. We really focused too on engaging the entire community. We knew that there were certain groups that probably were harder to get to. We emphasized those hard-to-reach populations, including the non-English speakers. We held 24 in-person events. We had one virtual meeting. We did eight open houses and workshops in each council ward. And then, as I mentioned, we went out where people were already gathering. So we had 16 what we call pop-up community events around the city. We also held collaboration meetings with our partner groups like Neighborhood Alliance, Downtown OKC Partnership, the Asian District. And then we had a special community meeting that Northeast Oklahoma City Renaissance helped us coordinate with the Northeast Collaboration Coalition and eight other Northeast Oklahoma City organizations about the bond. So anytime any of the, these partner groups requested that they wanted to hold a special meeting, our staff was there. We also had a website that we expanded with a lot of different options to get the word out. We use social media like we've never used it before. The website had a ton of tools so that people could research what had been funded in previous bond programs, through Better Street, Safer City. If they didn't see a project on the map, they kind of knew it, it was either already funded through previous sources or the funds were needed in this next bond issue. And the other impressive thing is the website had the ability to translate into, get these languages: Arabic, German, Spanish, French, Korean, Burmese, Tagalog, Vietnamese, Chinese, and traditional Chinese. So impressed that we're able to provide those services for all of our residents. Overall, the website logged 14,249 visits during that engagement period. We also had toolkits that we sent out to our different state, stakeholders and neighborhood leaders, to business districts, to the arts organizations, youth organizations, civic and nonprofit organizations, and chambers of commerce. They were able to use these toolkits to facilitate conversations about the projects that were important to them in their areas. Through that, they would go to our website at visionokc.gov where they could drop pins on a map with specific project needs and ideas. Overall, 6,030 project ideas were submitted on that map. So we're really proud, as we went to analyze that data, that there were only a handful of projects that we hadn't already heard from the community or already had logged into the bond program. That handful of projects, we went back out, reassessed. Public Works Department was able to add four of the six projects that we didn't already have onto the map into the bond program. So I think what this tells us is that our bond program, the way it's structured, is really reinforcing the community's needs and, and priorities. If you'll go to the next slide. The other thing that we did is through our resident survey and through our online survey tools, we were asking what the priorities were for the bond. As you'll see from this list, streets, bridges, and traffic control are always the number one priority in our community. And as Debbie will go through the projects, you'll see that the majority of our bond is really concentrated on these improvements. Parks and Rec facilities, sidewalks, police and fire facilities, economic development, public transit. This is the priorities of our community and we believe our bond is reflective of these priorities. Next slide, please. So knowing that we have a lot of needs, our initial bond list with all of the needs and wants totaled about $7 billion. Knowing that we can't make a bond program to get all $7 billion dollars' worth of projects in it, we had to come up with a way to prioritize the most important things. So in 2017, for that bond, we, for the first time, developed prioritization criteria so that we could have some evaluation tools and methodologies that made sense, that could be customized for departments and customize the projects. We expanded on that prioritization methodology in 2025. We established a working group led by the Planning Department with other city departments to take base prior, uh, criteria to evaluate projects and then customize them to each department's specific types of projects. So we used this process. We had this framework that the staff meticulously went through each project and evaluated, sorted those projects by priority, and then that's what we gave to you all, to confirm that these were the top priority projects. And if there were any projects that we missed or needed to go out to reevaluate, we would do that. So I think that the takeaway of this work is that we're really proud and really excited of the package that's being presented. We feel like through all of our public engagement, outreach, and reinforcement of those needs, through work with council, as you work closely with your residents and your teams, that we have captured the highest priority and most critical needs in this bond issue. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Debbie. She's gonna go into the detail of how each one of those propositions is going to affect a lot of people and do a lot of good in our city.
Thank you, Aubrey. What we wanted to identify is with 621 square miles, we have a lot of infrastructure that we're responsible for maintaining, you know, from roads, bridges, traffic and drainage. And this slide just shows a snapshot of, of what we have. We have 804 intersections throughout the entire city, and we have almost 9,000 lane miles, residential and arterial streets. So in the 2025 bond proposition, we have 11 propositions: streets and bridges, traffic systems, the ones that the residents have identified as their major concern. And we've got city maintenance, economic development, and as you can see, transit, police, and fire. So it's a $2.7 billion program. We have identified 547 listed projects. 76% are critical infrastructure and 56% are dedicated to streets, bridges, and traffic. We do have unlisted funds. That is, for each proposition, it's spread throughout the 11 propositions. This This funding is available for making sure we can complete the projects with cost increase or scope issues, and then also if we have any unforeseen needs that might come up. 10 years is a long time to project. So critical infrastructure, we have bridges and traffic systems, drainage, police, fire, transit, and city facilities. So we have over 600 bridges in the city that we are responsible for. ODOT does an inspection of the bridges every two years and provides us the inspection reports. And that's what we use to identify the scopes and the bridges that we need to take care of. We're real excited. If you look way far out northeast, that is our last temper bridge that we'll be able to replace, and then we'll be good. So on traffic, we have 25 intersection improvements. These projects were identified through unfunded, approved signals through Traffic Commission. Our traffic impact studies identified some projects, and then just from what we had turned in and we evaluated. So on drainage, we have 44 projects identified on that. We have an extensive database of complaints, goes back years, and we use that in helping to identify these projects. Locations of known flooding is our major concern. In this proposition, we've got drainage projects for the Mustang Basin, the downtown basin, and we have some locations that were identified from that complaint database. Stormwater quality is also included in that. We have several inlets that we are going to install that will remove the sediment and chemicals out of the water, so flowing into the rivers and creeks, it should be cleaner. And then we've also included our river section. We need to replace some of our boats and make some improvements at the sediment basin. So for police department, this is police, municipal courts, and family justice. There are four projects for this proposition. Three of them are downtown. The courts, municipal courts, and the police both need extra room. They've kind of outgrown their facilities, and so we're going to build an annex for them. It will also include a new police lab. We're also going to provide a garage for people to park, and it'll be great because it will not only be for the employees, but it'll be for patrons of the courts or for the civic center after hours. So that will be really great. So in the fire department, we have seven projects. One is the Public Safety Training Center. We're going to complete that with this bond. They are upgrading existing stations. They have four new fire stations they're going to construct, and a new storage facility. So for transit, they have three projects. They have their administrative building that they need to construct. They need a bus fleet operations center. And then we're also building a downtown garage, as was talked about earlier. We need to replace the parking from the Prairie Surf. We expect this to be adjacent to the arena. This will not only be used for the team, but it will also be used for monthly parking. It'll be used for downtown parking in that area. It's kind of scarce. And also, we're looking forward to the RTA and the Amtrak. People will be able to park in the garage and then go across the street to catch the So the next one we have is city facilities. These are the facilities downtown and at CMF. And all of these projects are upgrades. We have out at CMF eight existing buildings that we need to upgrade, the HVAC. We're having to do some parking expansion to property we bought to the west. And downtown has some maintenance and renovations. So now we come to the big one. This is the streets proposition. This is 50% of the bond. It's $1.35 billion. And in the streets proposition, we have the residential and arterial resurfacing, widenings, sidewalks, and street enhancements. So on residential, you know, in our evaluation of the neighborhoods, we found areas in the 2017 that really needed to be resurfaced but weren't included because they had newer development around them. So that was when we were using a square mile. So we would average the PCI, and the older neighborhoods did not rise to the top. So this bond, to try to correct that, we've gone to quarter sections. And so as we've narrowed that focus, the older neighborhoods have stood out and have risen up in the priority. So on the arterial streets, you can see that they're citywide. Our goal is, right now, we're at 70 PCI. We would really like to get that up. So with this bond, we're hoping that we'll be able to do that. So on sidewalks, we used, we in planning, used the BikeWalk OKC plan to identify the projects. We expect to construct over 150 miles of sidewalks with this bond. And a lot of the focus is on access to schools, and to parks, and to commercial areas. Okay, on street widenings, we have 27 of those, and you can see these are located southwest and northwest. We've had tremendous explosion of neighborhoods out in that area, and the street networks are, they need a lot of help. So that's where the majority of our widenings are located. So street enhancements. Street enhancements can include street furniture, sidewalks, lighting, a full streetscape, and also landscape. So we do have one project that, as you can see, the downtown area and Bricktown area, that shows a large street enhancement. There is going to be a downtown strategic plan that will identify the locations and improvements that need to be done. So now we're moving on to the Quality of Life projects. These are the parks and recreation facilities, libraries and learning centers, and economic development programs, which we know as GOLT. So in the parks department, or the parks proposition, excuse me, we have 32 projects that we have identified. For the Parklands improvements, they're looking at doing improvements at Wheeler. They're going to upgrade several of their community centers, and they're providing irrigation wells for golf courses. There is trails section in here, and we are going to complete the Deep Fork Trail. This will provide that additional funding. And then the Quality of Life projects that are included, you know, for civic and sport event facilities, include locations such as the Bricktown Ballpark, softball Hall of Fame, river sport, the Mary Gardens, just areas that we need to go in and keep them at their current stage. So we'll go next to libraries, libraries and learning centers. We worked with the Metropolitan Library in Oklahoma County, and they identified their needs. We are going to do a project at the downtown library. We have three new roofs that need to be replaced. And there will be a new library located in western Oklahoma County. The learning center is the Clara Looper Civil Rights Project that is also included in this. So now we're at Economic and Community Development. The total amount for this proposition is $175 million. $125 million will be used for those program categories that you see there. They will also go through the economic development and council approval process. We have $50 million for affordable housing. We're currently developing those program details, and that will be brought back to city council within the next year. So here we are. This is our next steps. We got approval from the Planning Commission last Thursday, and we're doing the introduction today. The final hearing for this should be on July 15. We're going to do some additional resident engagement in the summer and fall, and the election will be October 14. So I'll be glad to turn it back to Mr. Freeman and Mayor Holt.
Thanks, Debbie. Thanks, Aubrey. Good work. We're happy to take any questions on that, if anyone has any questions. All right.
You know, everybody in this council has been working on this for months, so.
We have worn each other out.
Yeah, don't let the absence of comment reflect an idea that they haven't been working on this for a very long time, so.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah.
And it's just to say a thank you to our staff. You've done a wonderful job, especially, again, as the new kid on the horseshoe. It has been so reassuring to hear the systematic, careful, thoughtful work that our city does to put this package together to support all of our residents. So I just want to say thank you.
All right. Well, of course, everything today is just introductory. There are final votes on these items on July 15. So today, we can take up item AB. This is the resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on October 14. And then that'll be followed by the proclamation. So first up is AB. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That is set for final consideration on July 15. And then item AC is a related item. This is the proclamation, calling the election. And we can take that up as well. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That is set for final consideration on July 15. Okay. Item AD1 is an extension of our collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. This is just because we're not there yet, and we need to buy ourselves... How much time does this add? Let's see.
I believe that it extends until we get the new agreements in place. Is that correct?
This is for the whole fiscal year, it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So executive session is not requested. That's the totality of what this is doing. It's just extending the agreement while negotiations continue. We can take of that item, AD1. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AE1 is similarly an extension of a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 123. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed as eight to one. And then item 11AF is an extension of collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 157. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11AG1 is a letter of engagement with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and Phillips Mura PC for legal services related to the Engineering Services Contract Project SC0950. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item AH1 is a settlement agreement and release with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and ASI Construction. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. AI1 is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing the firm Collins Zorn Wagner to represent city employee Taylor Shaw. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed as eight to one. 11AJ1 is a claim recommended for denial, 1A. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11AK1, our claims recommended for approval. Items A through D, we can take with one motion. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 12, comments from council. Sorry. Word one.
Go Thunder.
Word two.
Yes. I look forward to this bond conversation. I'm very excited about that. I look forward to the July 15 vote to set this election for our people. I think this is going to be a very important investment. I remember asking our finance director, Brent Bryant, asking him to talk to me about the history of bonds in Oklahoma City and the numbers, like back in the '50s and the '60s and the '70s and the '80s. They were so small, the amount. And that's why we're just decades behind, whether it's drainage needs, street needs, sidewalk, all the needs, all people say that matter to them, come from a history of us not investing in ourselves. And I think the last quarter century tells a different story. And so I'm really excited to join, hopefully, a majority of us on council on July 15 to set this election. Very excited about that. I'll be curious to hear a little bit more particulars, because I know there's going to be a lot of Olympic needs. And I want to make sure that we're balancing those upfront, as we're selling the bonds, with the needs throughout all the eight words. I have a feeling, are you already shaking your head, City Manager? So, but anyway, I'm just kind of looking forward to learn a little bit more about how we balance those. But I'm really grateful, especially to the 100 people who showed out, showed up back in 2024 to help shape some of these projects when we had a Word 2 meetup at Oklahoma City University. I was very proud of everyone who added their voice, and now we're seeing the culmination of that work. So just wanted to say I'm grateful for that work. And also, again, just wanted to reiterate my gratitude for those of you who supported earlier the work which began in 2023, especially Counselor Pennington, for your kind remarks earlier. And then, you know, yeah, we just have a lot of implementation work ahead of us, but I just want to really reiterate my gratitude to people who are supporting this work and this vision. And City Manager, you know, to you, just want to, you asked me a question yesterday, when I asked about, you know, kind of studying how to get this right, and you literally just said to me, had you let me down on this yet? And I had to reflect, and, you know, we have a mental health alternative because of the work you helped set in motion. So once more, I turn my faith to you, so.
Thank you. Word three.
I have one really exciting thing. So West Tin is the only district in southwest Oklahoma City and was the first Oklahoma historical site marker receiver this last week. So we had a ceremony for it and everything. So I'm really proud of the West Tin district and the work that they are doing to both preserve our heritage and then build and strengthen our communities through networks and relationships. And so kudos to that council for, you know, identifying something that was valuable, recognizing it, and bringing the community together around it. And then the second piece was, I just really appreciated being able to have real conversation here today and work through, you know, different perspectives, and be professional and considerate. And I think that that's, you know, that speaks to professionalism that I am so proud of in the state of Oklahoma, and I love the innovative spirit and the thinking outside of the box. And I'm excited to see, you know, where we go with the GeoBond moving forward, and can't wait to see how we make the magic happen, because it's going to be a tough one.
Word four? Word five? Word six? Word seven? Word eight? All right. That brings us then to item 13. Citizens to be heard. None has signed up, which brings us to item 14, adjournment, and we are adjourned.